Trustees meeting, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. Please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor our fallen servicemen and women. Thank you.
As a reminder, the village is preparing the budget for the next fiscal year. And as a part of that process, there will be four budget meetings. Budget meetings will take place in the village hall boardroom as well as via Zoom from seven thirty P M to nine thirty P M. There are two work sessions remaining Thursday, March twenty third and Thursday, March thirtieth. These sessions are held at village hall in the boardroom as well as via Zoom from seven thirty to nine thirty P M. This year's village election will take place at Saint Paul's Fieldhouse on Tuesday, March twenty first from twelve noon to nine P M. I hope residents come out to vote, but if you're unable to vote in person, there are absentee ballot applications available outside of the boardroom, on the counter at village hall and on the village's website. If you have any questions regarding the absentee ballot applications or anything concerning the election, please reach out to village clerk Karen Altman. Thank you all for coming this evening. We have a special guest tonight and we're going to go right into the presentation from Mr. Westerman, but before that, I want to make some comments. In the fall of twenty twenty one, I issued a village-wide notice seeking residents willing to serve on the mayor Saint Paul's committee. I requested residents with experience in law, finance, architecture, engineering, history and communications to volunteer. Of all the residents who volunteered, none were excluded. Subcommittees were formed to address critical issues such as program, use, legal, architecture, engineering, finance, history and communications. The mayor Saint Paul's committee has spent thousands of hours conducting research, analysis, outreach and public presentations to determine the potential for adaptive reuse or potential demolition of Saint Paul's main building. As a licensed registered architect, I formed a committee to provide information to residents so a vote could be held to determine the fate of Saint Paul's. The extraordinary efforts of these subcommittees has resulted in the most comprehensive study of the of the issues regarding Saint Paul's to date by resident volunteers since its purchase by the village in nineteen ninety three. An enormous debt of gratitude is owed to all the resident volunteers and their families who gave of their time and expertise. Remember, the volunteers are your friends and neighbors. They deserve your utmost support and address the most difficult issue that's faced our village in the last thirty years. As we continue on, I would now like to call upon Mr. Lloyd Westerman of Westerman Construction, who will present to the board trustees their findings with regard to the Saint Paul's cost estimates for demolition, adaptive reuse and facadeism. Mr. Westerman, please come up to the podium. It's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Good evening. I actually could use your guidance. There's two ways we could present this. I have the actual report that we're submitting and then we have a sort of synthesized version, which is a PowerPoint. I personally feel like it's better to just go through the report really quickly because it contains a lot of information, which I suspect most people in the village are already familiar with.
It's your choice.
Yeah, I think I'll stick with the report. And I'm happy at any point to answer any questions, of course. So feel free to stop me. I guess you guys would stop me though first, right? So, so on my right here is Stephen Taylor, our architect, who assisted me in helping define what the scope of work was for the three different budgets that we had to prepare. And also, most importantly, give me guidance on what was the legal and what would be fully to code, at least to New York State code. But we also were assisted by a mechanical engineer, layer engineering. Thank you. Hello. We were also assisted by layer engineering, a resident in Nassau County. And that's Val Lair and he was at the town hall meeting. And he gave us guidance on the heating, ventilating and air conditioning and electrical systems and fire protection systems in the building, which are largely absent, but gave us guidance on how to go forward with new systems. We were assisted by Fennel Engineering, Sean Fennel, in evaluating the existing structural conditions of the building and by Gregory Dietrich, who is a historic preservation consultant, who gave us guidance with respect to the importance of the elements of the building and what required salvage and potential storage. And that largely figures in our budget for demolition and to some extent with facadeism, the I'm jumping ahead, but the his he helped us a little bit with the adaptive reuse budget, but pretty much our approach in adaptive reuse is just to restore the entire building. So his report is contained in our in our ultimate report too. And I want to say importantly, every single team member has been to the building numerous times. And thank I thank the village for doing the emergency cleanup, which really facilitated our ability to evaluate the building in better detail and make it a little a little safer. It's not that it doesn't feel that unsafe, but it it just makes it a little easier to move around and see things. So that was very, very helpful. And so after many visits, we started to put together rough out what the scopes of work would be in the three categories. And I guess I'll just repeat the three categories in case you are not familiar with it. The we were charged with providing a cost estimate to demolish the Saint Paul's school, and that includes also the cottages to the north of them. We were the second budget we were required to provide was to perform what is called adaptive reuse of the existing building, which I will go into a little bit more detail about. And if you have questions, Stephen was instrumental in that. And the third was was to provide a budget for a scheme that was referred to as facadeism. And that revolved around trying to preserve the facade with the potential someday of ending a new structure behind it. And so that's those are the three budgets that you'll find in our in our final report that we prepared and are now submitting. And I should also say we're referring to this report as a preliminary submission because I welcome comments by the town board and I didn't want them to feel excluded at all from giving us their input in the final version that I assume will be ultimately posted to the village's excellent website documenting the entire history of Saint Paul's, which was also, by the way, a great tool for us in evaluating what we needed to do. So thank you for maintaining that that good resource. So I'll just quickly go through this. This is our introductory letter where we introduced the team in the same manner I just did. And I should also say, very importantly, that I have worked with every member of the team and I I personally run an active construction company. Most of our work is in the five boroughs and I've worked with all of the consultants professionally that I brought on board. And not only that, but I've worked on them on very similar buildings to Saint Paul's of the same year in the late nineteenth century, the same type of construction and almost the same kind of architecture, which is kind of interesting. The letter also is a required letter that it be approved by a registered architect, which Stephen is, and and he stamped the letter indicating such table of contents, a little history about the building, the architect, so on and so forth, which I think everyone is largely familiar with. We give it an encapsulation of the history of the school and the major moments in its history. I'm sorry, can I get a bottle of water? Is that?
Okay, okay.
Thanks. And of all the of all the documents that the town had, our focus was on two major documents pertaining to the structure. One was the drawings prepared by the committee that you mentioned earlier. And I believe they were issued in September. And that gave us excellent guidance on the adaptive reuse and was somewhat helpful in determining the facadeism. And in fact, it was also helpful to determine the bulk of the building for for the demolition, but most importantly, it gave us guidance on, thank you, Superintendent, what the what we needed to know for the adaptive reuse. And then for the facadeism, we relied on because the facadeism, which I'll get to in a little bit more detail, is very variable. There's just a lot of ways of looking at that. So in order to just pin it down, we looked at the Irwin Belinsky report, which was a prior document submitted to the town that goes into great depth about it. And and more importantly, for the way that they their solution to deal with the facade, we adapted to our budgets. I go into more detail about the methodology of our report. The demolition approach is pretty simple. And our approach to perform to providing the budget was to both come up with our own unit costs that we're familiar with with respect to our market conditions based largely on working in New York City. We figured the work at prevailing wage, which if for anyone who doesn't know prevailing wage is basically the equivalent rate of a union worker. And it varies slightly by county and we applied the local rates, but the rates in Nassau County are basically the same as they are in New York City. And that's very important to understand when you're looking at the construction costs, because if you try to gauge it against anything you do in your own house, they're usually significantly more for even simple things. So it's hard for some people to believe, you know, when you look at some things, how could it cost that much because it's prevailing wage? And, you know, basically the prevailing wage is a hundred dollars an hour, thereabouts at cost to the worker. Whereas you guys might be paying, you know, thirty dollars an hour to some worker locally to do some work. So it's huge. It's really huge. So we go into detail about that and and our approach to the, by the way, I don't know how much time I have, so.
Keep going.
Okay, so on our on our on our approach to the budget and and adaptive reuse, an important factor of adapted reuse was that we had to provide a budget that made the building up to code. Now, that word code is a big, a big phrase, but our approach was to basically make the core areas of the building, which I'll show in a second, functional for community use. So to code doesn't mean that it's a school or pre K or STEM Science Center or something like that. It just means that basic people in the village could use the spaces and that the spaces that are contemplated in our budget for the adaptive reuse are white boxes. So literally new flooring, clean walls, heating and ventilation, new bathrooms, elevator, so on and so forth. But but back to the demo, I'm sorry. So the demo methodology methodology was to provide unit costs on our understanding of the New York City market. My company has demolished two buildings in the city recently. And I was able to convert that to unit costs. And at the same time, I also got hard costs by walking subcontractors through for for the exterior demolition, a very reputable union outfit that I worked with a lot. And interior demolition, same, a very reputable interior demolition outfit that I've worked with a lot. And and a reputable union abatement contractor to make sure that under all conditions, all three uses, that any asbestos containing material in the building was removed. So we have the benefits and and I don't know if I have to go into great detail about that of each of each phase and the pros and cons. You know, we can answer questions about that, but I think it's more important that I I go right into the heart of the budgets and how we figured it, since that's the main event of what we were charged to do. We talk a little bit about the evaluation of the existing building. So I have to say, in walking through the building, we generally felt comfortable. There are clearly areas that are that are compromised, very badly compromised, but they seem to be isolated. We hope that they're isolated, but in going through the whole building, you don't generally feel uncomfortable and it's been abandoned so long that it doesn't have a bad smell anymore. There's nothing living in it at all. I didn't, we don't even see any evidence of any kind of vertebrae, you know, no, no raccoons living in it or any of that kind of thing. It's just, it's just empty. And I guess it's well sealed off from from the village. The kids don't seem to be getting into it. And so it's it's fairly sound. So that's not to say there aren't areas that really need a lot of T L C. But overall, the the building feels good. But I'll get into that in the adaptive reuse thing, but it is imperative, though, that the village do something with it in the next few years because it can't be left the way it is indefinitely. So so in the same breath, you might say the building is solid and it'll live our outlast our lifetime, but you still have to take care of it. And if you don't take care of it or demolish it, it's gonna it's gonna fall apart eventually. No matter what you do to it, or you'll you'll have to keep re-roofing it with this Band-Aid approach or support the interior parts. And it's not going to last forever on that approach. There's no doubt about that. You can see the evidence of that in the building. Then we go into more detail about that. This will all be available to the village. The mechanical systems are non-existent. All the sprinkler pipe, if it had water and it burst and and fell apart. The boiler, there's originally the building was fed by coal furnaces or boilers. Or maybe there were furnaces first and converted to boilers and and fireplaces in the nineteenth century. And then at some point it was converted to oil and that's all abandoned and the boilers are 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 all seized and none of the equipment that operates and would function or there's no ability to reuse any of that, unfortunately. So again, our numbers and adaptive reuse contemplate the semblance of a new system that would provide a comfortable environment in the community areas and a stable environment for the rest of the building. We also included fire protection systems in the adaptive reuse approach, which is very important. The building has no fire suppression system now. God forbid a fire were to break out, it would be it would be very catastrophic because it's the building structures brick, but the brick is the floors are all made by wood timbers, joists, not unlike a home. So this is the scope of work, but I'm going to just jump to the budget because in going through the budget, you you I put some schedules in here, but again, that's all contained in the budget as well. So this is a demolition budget. The demolition budget contemplates a number of things other than just tearing down the building. First, you have to abate it. Secondly, or you have to secure the site. You have to secure the site and keep dust and and meddling people and kids out of out of the building because when you're in the process of demolishing, it becomes extremely unsafe and abate it. And basically, we follow procedures that stand to the test of the Department of Buildings in New York City, which is brutal. So I feel like what we figured would be sufficient here. We included a big component because the you're you're faced with this challenge in demolishing the building that the building is part of a historic, national historic district. And so according to our historic preservation consultant Gregory Dietrich, you if you if they ultimately gave you permission to demolish it, you would be required to salvage contributing elements of the building, both interior and exterior. So I figured that in our budget. And what I figured there was, you know, teams of workers to take apart the wood, the Victorian wood trim inside the building, the key elements, some of the wing scoting, but all the stuff at the parlors where the really decorative wood is, the main entrance salvaging components of the stair, taking out the stained glass, and and major elements of the facade, packing it up and shipping it somewhere to the southwest because it really needs a dry environment to be stored. And I figured five years of storage was there and I figured all the trucking back and forth and so on and so forth. And that's where it would be until you decide what to do with it. And then once that's all accomplished, then the building would be torn down by mechanical means with a with a machine that literally like eats the building and it would come down fairly quickly. And dust control would be maintained by keeping it wet most of the time, the hazardous materials having been removed. And then once the building is demolished, we'd down to the foundation elements in the basement, they would all be removed with a big backhoe pulled out, not unlike what you might see around here if someone's building a new house. And and then we also figured the hole to be filled in with clean fill and then planted with grass. And I think my budget included some very light landscaping, some trees, walkways, benches, things like that, but not a formal park, no water features, statues, playgrounds, none of that stuff. But just a basic return to nature kind of appearance. And this is the detail. So we don't just come up with numbers. This is line by line, all the things that we figured, including what's called the general requirements, which you'll see through all the budgets, which is the stuff that doesn't survive the project, although on a demolition project, nothing survives it. And the the management of the whole process, field offices, temporary bathrooms, temporary electrical plumbing, all that stuff. We have to figure all those things because the tearing down of the building has to be a self-sustaining operation. Okay, now we go into adaptive reuse. And with adaptive reuse, an important observation that we made with our structural engineer when we walk and we walk through the entire building is that there are areas that are compromised where where they collapse under their own weight because of water intrusion. And the reason why they collapse under their own weight is basically because the joists became rotten and mold fungus grew in it and caused dry rot and they just sheared off at the wall. And and they just collapsed under themselves. And and that is clearly indicated in bays where the roof was violated. So an issue, though, is that because the building's been kept cold for so long and water did get into the building, although some of it has been curtailed recently. There is a lot of moisture in the building and just by walking around the building visually, it's difficult to assess the extent of the wood in the building, the structural wood that's compromised. Our engineer had a moisture meter and he took moisture readings in areas that you would think were dry and they were at seventy or eighty percent wet. And that's not good. So, you know, to really legally approach the building, you have to, we assumed and his assumption was that we should assume that thirty percent of the wood joists in the building are probably compromised. So that's included in our budget, but in order to get to that thirty percent of joists to fix it, you have to basically strip out the entire interior of the building. So again, we have salvage for some of the key elements there. And the partitions that are perpendicular to the long corridors, the corridor walls being a supportive element of the building are all removed. The flooring is all removed. Below the finished flooring is this cementitious component, which I believe is called deepening, or you might pronounce it deafening, which was put in in the nineteenth century to block sound transmission in the floor. And it's about an inch and a half thick and it's a white cakey substance. And then below that is the same stuff, which it might have even been made on on the site at the time. That's applied to the underside of the joists as fire stopping and also as a finished ceiling. And we had that stuff tested and it's just some kind of silica gypsum based stuff. Fortunately, it has no asbestos in it. Looks nasty, but it's a perfectly ordinary demo. So that would all come out and and the building skeletal system would be exposed and rebuilt. While this is going on, the entire outside of the building, the entire perimeter, including the insides of the E would be scavelled it and all the way up to the tops of the mansards and the whole facade would be restored under relatively standard historic preservation guidelines. And the mansards, of course, would all be have to be re-waterproofed with new roofing systems. And we figured all of that. So the so when we're done, the entire facade is up to standards and will keep out the elements. And the roof will keep out the elements. Now, as far as the windows are concerned, because windows, the the building has a tremendous amount of windows. I don't recall the exact count, but it's again, it's in the detail of our budget. It would have been exorbitant to replace all the windows and especially replace the windows in areas that you weren't using. So we figured replacing the windows in the areas where the intended initial use would be. But in the rest of the windows, we were going to put plywood backed by styrofoam, which is a much simpler, easy solution to retain the heat in those parts of the building. But at in the future, the window openings would have been prepared for new windows if and when the town or village decided to to expand into the rest of the building. Moving on to drywall and finishes, we so again, we incorporated the finishes in the core area, which are basically all, if you can imagine, all immediately adjacent to the entry stairs off of Stewart Avenue. And we provided for a new elevator for ADA access to the second and third floor. A few bathrooms, small bathrooms, I would imagine like akin to the one downstairs in this building, that kind of thing. Nothing exorbitant, restoring the stairs so that they could be safely walked on and doing some simple, basic in situ restoration to the stained glass. If you took it out, it could get exorbitant. And with respect to mechanical systems, we put in a new, we figured a new sprinkler system throughout the entire building to protect it. We figured heating, ventilating and air conditioning systems, the air conditioning limited to just the community areas. But the the air conditioning we figured would be the latest technology because you might say, why are we air conditioning it? Well, the thing is, the trend in New York State now, probably nationally very shortly, is to heat and cool buildings electrically. And since you're heating it electrically using an air source heat pump in the summer, it works the reverse and then you get cooling. So you might as well benefit from that. And because it's a community space, we have to put duck work in anyway because you have to distribute air, you have to meet ventilation standards. And because we have to do that and to 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 comply with code, we also have to do some heat recovery. So we put in some what are called ERV units, energy recovery units, that sort of like a heat exchanger of the heat that you have itself and 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 warm up the fresh air that's coming in or cool the fresh air that's coming in so that you get the benefit of reusing the air, but not reusing it to breathe because you're bringing in in outside air. And so that's a component of what we figured. So it would be totally suitable for community use up to the most anticipated, up to the latest standards. Of course, in hand in hand with all that is the building needs all new electrical service. And so we figured that. And again, minimal lighting outlets in the core areas and the rest of the building, we had to provide, the rest of the building is heated with what are called unit heaters, typically the kind of thing you might see in a garage hanging in the ceiling, except they're they're they're, we're going to put them on the on the floor and they're going to be heated. The heating source will be hot water that circulates to it. And they will have to be powered up and those I figured a certain interval of those and they're scattered all around the building to just keep the building at fifty degrees in the winter because that's all you really need to do to keep the sprinkler pipe from freezing and to keep the building basically sound and to lower the levels of any kind. In a building that's kept cold, even if it's watertight, cold tends to increase humidity levels naturally. That's why your basement always feels clammy even when it's not raining. And it's the same thing in this building. So in this building, you could go in and it could be seventy degrees outside and you walk in and it's like all of a sudden it's fifty five inside the building. And that's not good because mold thrives at relative humidity percentages just under seventy percent. And then over that, it's it flourishes. So that needs to be suppressed and 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 an excellent way of suppressing that, according to our mechanical engineer, is just maintaining a semblance of heat throughout the building, which in the end can be grown grown off of, can be expanded. Then at the bottom of our budgets, typically you'll see all the general contractor stuff. These this jobs, these projects more than likely would be funded with public funds, so we include a bond. The insurance costs, which I would like to just say, since I have the floor, in New York State, you pay the highest construction insurance in the nation, if not the world, because of certain laws here. And and that's And and that gets worked into the number. And then, of course, we put in the general contractors overhead and profit. We allowed for some escalation and a contingency. And with the adaptive reuse of just the core original St. Paul's building, we come up to just under fifty million. And to that, we we came up with a just sort of nap back of the napkin kind of estimate for a new theater structure, which would fit in between some of the ease and a new pool building that would fit in some of the ease. And the reason why the pool building is more is because pools have very extensive mechanical systems to not only obviously maintain the water in the pool, which I'm sure some of you are familiar with, but in an indoor pool, you have to dehumidify the room, which is a really big deal, or the building starts to eat itself out. So that's why it's two million dollars more than the theater. So that's that's the adaptive reuse budget. And then on to facadeism. And I should say that this is sort of like a pyramid of 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 a reverse pyramid of of complexity. The the demolition was relatively simple to approach and I feel very, very, the the numbers are very solid. I I the adaptive reuse, you know, obviously, we had to come up with our opinion of how things should be done. And we did, and and I think we provided the right thing, but there's variables there, but it's it's solid. And the numbers I applied to that are solid. In facadeism, there's a lot of different ways you can skin that cat, okay? And I can just talk about that really briefly. You 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 and this occurs all the time. But I think that the most important thing about facadeism is that to really approach it, to save the facade, you really have to immediately know what you're going to do with that facade. Is there going to be a building behind it or not or when? And if you don't establish that, it becomes very confusing because you can't just leave a facade up there, held together, especially of that magnitude by structural steel and twenty years from now decide, oh, we're going to tie a new building into it. It it will fall apart, it just doesn't work that way. So, you know, if you, we we first thought about supporting it from the outside, which is fairly common, but that would definitely require a building being brought into it immediately. There, we thought about supporting it from the inside and tearing down all the structure and then theoretically tying that steel or structure, it would be steel, into a new steel structure that might come behind it, but we don't even know what that is. So that that's sort of like good money after bad. So we settled on the approach very similar to what Erwin Belinsky came up with, which is to leave the first bay of structure, which makes the building not quite self supporting, but we would have to introduce steel into that ideally. And 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 then because you're maintaining that original structure, theoretically, the new structure that comes into it has to match the floor heights of that, of the existing building. And which is a very common problem when you do the, when you try to save a facade. And we did introduce steel in a steel component into that. But because now you have this sort of truncated shell of a building, basically, we figured, and it's still supporting in part by wood, we have to add a sprinkler system, some electrical for lighting, some basic mechanical systems to keep the sprinkler system from freezing and also to keep the building relatively dry. We figured, again, this is in the Erwin Belinsky report, the back of the building that's all exposed now would be an aluminum insulated panel. Not unlike a kind of panel that you might see in a curtain wall building in the city where there's no glass, but there's a metal panel that would be like an insulated metal panel. And those are relatively inexpensive and become very popular. So we 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 figured cladding the entire back of the building that way. And so in this way, you have this thing where it's it could it could self sustain the way it is for some time because it's not clear what exactly you're doing to it. And then again, we did back of the napkin, you know, what a hundred thousand square foot building with a with a sort of impressive building with a skylight, perhaps, you know, architecturally noteworthy. And again, I can anticipate what an architect's going to do behind that. And so we carried about twelve hundred dollars, we carried twelve hundred dollars a square foot, which is which is a very solid number for a special building, you know. If you see a fancy building on a university campus fancy library building that you really, it 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 is, and if it was built with public funds, it's in that realm of cost and I feel very comfortable with that. So so that's basically the budgets and that's what we were charged to do, you know. I and we give pros and cons, but we tried to approach this completely impartially and and not and not and not put any more effort into any one or the other. And that was our charge. This is our evaluations of the mechanical systems. We appended it to the report. Mechanical engineer did some analysis. I loosely adapted what he came up with to provide the temporary heating and air conditioning and ventilation to the building. This is Gregory Dietrich's report where he goes into the components that should be salvaged and why. This is the site, of course, that everyone's familiar with. And this is, of course, the plans of the building. And just to reiterate, I guess, I I don't, I think, can you see my mouse on the screen? Yeah, so the areas that we figured are typically around around this the center core going up three floors. And the old chapel would be demolished, but a big room, you know, that could be used for something. And that's 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 it for the adaptive reuse. We did some conceptual three D renderings. This one shows the our our take on the facadeism. And this is what the site would look like if it was demolished. We did a Photoshop thing showing the buildings erased. And then, you know, new plantings there, like, but we didn't do any kind of massive rearrangement of that entire area, which, you know, you that was not included. And we our landscaping is very light in in in, you know, if you you might need to supplement our budget by putting in some funds for whatever you would do with that area. And I think that's it. I mean, that's that's our that's our report, those are our costs. You guys need to digest it, I suppose, and then make your own comments. And then I hope to send it to you formally as the final version that you would then upload for the rest of the residents to to see. Any questions?
Any questions, trustees?
Do you mind if I sit down, if I take a lot of questions that I can hand the mic to? To Stephen.
Mr. West, and I noticed in the facadeism, you you did it, used it calculating a hundred thousand square foot building. How did you come to that? So size?
Yeah, hold on, let me just get my. The the original building is about a hundred and twenty five thousand square feet. So the thinking is that the what was left is about twenty five thousand square feet, thereabouts. So in the in order to provide a new building that matched, at least in in size of what the old building was, just using that as a baseline, that's how we came up with that that figure.
So the facade would be about twenty five thousand square feet after you?
Well, the the yeah, the facade, the 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 floor, the the aggregated of the floors in that building, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sir, am I accurate in stating that the cottages that you envisioned to be removed was approximately ten thousand square feet?
I think so, yeah. If that's what I did, I list that there, let me, or here's my folder.
The answer is yes, you did.
Yeah.
Because I don't try not to make things up too often.
Yes.
So my question is approximately, how many rooms was the cottages in total?
Rooms? You know, I I didn't, I didn't really.
So the answer to that question is you did not go into the cottages?
I have been in the cottages, yes. We had meetings in the cottages and I'm familiar with, I didn't go through every cottage, but I'm thoroughly, we we had meetings and use the the senior center as a base of operations. But to demolish the cottages is really nothing, especially on this site. That would happen in a in a few days because you basically would just take a giant bulldozer and 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 knock them down and then scoop it up and throw it out. I mean, so after you did any abatement, if that was necessary and so on and so forth. But it was just sort of a ancillary process. It wasn't part of the main event, which is to tear down the school.
Thank you.
So the demolition cost for the cottages is included in all three different options?
I think so, that's a good question.
I don't believe.
No, it's not, I'm sorry, it's not.
The demolition charge cost for the cottages was not a separate line item. It was just included in the demolition budget, if I recall correctly.
No, I had the cottages as a separate number and under demolition in the in the demolition budget. But I don't think we, and it's a it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. You know, with markups, we call it a hundred and fifty. So I think it's not included in the other two budgets, but I could add that. But, you know, in in the in the context of the of the of the value of all those budgets, it's really not that much money. Adaptive, yeah, the only thing I I don't have, I have it in facadeism, but not adaptive reuse. So we could add that.
So what what is the amount then for demolishing the cottages that isn't included?
Well, so it'd be, you know, we we had a hundred and twenty thousand in the conceptual budget, that's the trade cost. And so with, you know, markups, maybe it's a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty, I mean, I'd have to go back and recalculate it.
Did you calculate the cost of renovating the whole building? I recognize this as doing it in staged approach, but what would the ultimate cost be to restore the whole building, have all new windy windows, systems, so that it was, all the space was usable?
Right, so we didn't, we did not do that. We we figured it the way we did. And focused on the on the plans that were presented to the village in in September on the blue areas that I think were indicated to us would be the initial phase for community use. So the rest of the building could be expanded into, but we didn't include that. And I can't just throw out a number right now, I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to evaluate that.
But in your professional opinion, is and given the fact you've been in and out of the building quite a bit, you said, could you ballpark it?
Well, again, you know, big factor that is ballpark it like what would be the use? You know, so so.
So let's let's assume we're using the white box method you did for the bottom floors. So if you did white box to start and then beyond that, there have to be a determination, what's the ballpark?
And and white box the entire building?
Theoretically, sure.
I I could throw out a number, but the problem is the finishes are not that big a deal, but the we would have to expand the mechanical systems there that are not that are not, and and again, I'm not sure about it's tied into what used to would be because that would tie into the ventilation requirements. So I don't, I I mean, I I'd prefer to get back to you guys on that rather than just throw out a number officially and be held to it, it's just too too big a number to to just sort of make it up here. We're not, we're not talking about like, you know, you want to buy two tires and you want to know how much would four tires cost? You know, I just not like that.
No, we we fully appreciate the work you've done and that is, you know, we want to make sure we have an accurate idea about what it would be. And then I think beyond that, as you said, the work we're looking at here is purely to white box, right? So it doesn't really include any other finishing that we would want to do depending upon the uses that we're looking to use it for.
Yeah, because you, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, as you said before.
Yeah.
What's estimated here is it's the basement, the ground floor and the second floor, right?
Yeah.
That's what it is.
I think element to the third floor, yeah.
And to your comment, it's just white boxing, meaning that a room will be basically painted, spackled.
Yes.
For whatever we want, but we then
Wood floor.
We would then have to customize it for whatever the usage would be.
Yes, exactly.
If you can come back with the full number, that would be excellent, please.
Any other questions, comments? We get some comments from the audience? If no one, trustees, are we finished? Okay. Yes.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for your efforts and for your explanations. Although I had my eyes checked two days ago, a little trouble reading, and I think other people did, but your explanations, I think, were illuminating. I do have a couple of questions pertaining to the facade concept. And please correct me if I make any statement that you think is inaccurate. But my understanding is that you were going to put a five story building of approximately one hundred thousand square feet behind the facade in that concept. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, so yes and no. Having no idea whatsoever what that building would be, we just have a a unit cost per square foot for that.
Okay, so basically.
That's below our line. So anything, so the whole idea of budgeting is that you really do try to scientifically quantify and come up with some reasonable argument why you think it's going to cost that. So with respect to all three budgets and what what the scope of work is that we understood it to be, we did that. And then, when it comes to something that's entirely speculative, like a new building or infill building or parkland, I have no idea and that price could be all over the place. I mean, and everybody has a different opinion on what would be there, so.
So do I understand it correctly that the uses to some degree drive what those costs would be in that size building? They they're a significant component figuring it out.
Yeah, the uses are are what is referred to as programming, right? I mean, you really, what what the building would be programmed for.
The same would be true with renovation. If you don't know the uses, you can't more precisely determine what the cost.
Right, that's why we figured it's so called white box.
Okay. Now, you said it was a five story building. Is is that because the facade is five stories and a five story would best support the facade? Or is there an other reason or is it just simply to get the hundred thousand square feet?
Yeah, to get to get the hundred thousand square feet and to be, it's basic bulk. Its basic geometry would be similar to what's there.
Okay.
So you're not going to put a hundred story building behind it or 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 one story building. So it seemed like that if we were going to, if you were going to do anything, that that would be the most sensible thing to do.
Okay. And hundred thousand square feet was chosen. I believe I've seen some literature that the usable square feet of the existing building is approximately a hundred and five thousand. So this more or less equates to that usable square feet.
Yes, yes.
Okay, could you do a building that's five stories high behind the facade? That's less than a hundred thousand square feet, depending on what the uses or programming, to use your word, would be?
Yes, 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 of course you could do that.
Okay. Just going briefly to demolition, did you see the report that was handed out the handout last Monday when you gave your presentation?
I've seen it, but I haven't gone and given it a thorough.
I know, I think of you as Mr. McCouda, but I know that's not your name.
Stephen Taylor.
Okay, sorry. Anyway, on the demolition, I noticed that the the line on top of it, please hand it to me if you, unless you just know it off the top of your head. It says the capital cost is thirty two million, six hundred and seventy eight. Correct thousand. Okay, the demolition, including what I would call salvage salvage costs are seventeen point six.
Right.
And this is roughly thirty two point six. So that means that the uses in the park with the elements that would be put in are fifteen million dollars, plus or minus a few cents. Is that my math right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, say that again.
This this document says thirty-two, six, seven, eight.
Yeah.
So thirty-two million. And your document says that the cost of demolition, including the historic salvage component, would be about seventeen million point six.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know? I don't see it, I don't think it's in your report. Do you know what the components are of that fifteen million dollars of elements that would make the basic demolition into a park?
No, no.
You don't know what they, okay, so you're not familiar with the basis of this document being prepared?
Familiar with the the line items that we fed into that document.
Okay, but.
That's what we worked on.
But you don't know what those uses are to come up with the fifteen million?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Just come up. Evening, everyone. Bob Oris, Twenty Eight Grove. When I understand, first thing that has to be done with the building, if you're going to reuse it, it's going to have to be restored to its original condition. And then at that point, it's inspected to make sure all the code requirements are verified. Upon that time, then you can start adaptive reuse. And then once adaptive reuse is done, then the code inspection has to be done again. Doesn't? Well, that's interesting. Now, under adaptive reuse, you have a price down here at forty-nine million, five hundred and change. Is that for bringing the building back to its original condition? Or is that include also include redactive use? And that to me is, this figure is very low if you're going to do both. You have to, you have to bring the building back to its original condition.
We figured we figured restoring it, so.
Restoring it back to consider.
No, no, I figured restoring it as you would restore any other facade to make it secure.
No, this is for reuse.
Yeah, and for reuse and and to make it watertight like you would do to any apartment building or older large structure like you find in the city that are subject to local law eleven or what's called FISB now. That's how our approach was. Now, in doing that, it does restore it nicely. It's not going to become identical to what it was a hundred and fifty years ago or whatever. But it will improve the building and make it so that it's watertight and elements of the facade won't fall off and and that.
And it passes all code, all building.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Now.
So, sorry.
Now, once that is achieved, then according to, according to your own documentation here, then you can start read adaptive reuse.
Yeah, I'd like to address that. So as Lloyd had mentioned, on all the different schemes, this comes down to how the building is programmed. And when you decide what the program is, then you decide what the codes are. So if a building is a warehouse, they have certain specific codes that you have to follow. If a building is a school, there's specific codes that you have to follow. And that leads to occupancy, how many people can use it, structural, fire codes, et cetera. So in determining the adaptive reuse, we were following what was presented to the town, to the village of kind of their grand master plan from research from previous village meetings throughout the years. So to enter the section of code use, the code, the building would be brought up to code based off of the current program for adaptive reuse. So that's not one or the other. It's you follow the pathway toward what the end goal is of the building.
Well, it's a little confusing. You have a state, you have a line in here in your study. The building would also need to go through a building code review to ensure all safety, fire and ADA accessibility requirements are being addressed within the first phase to prepare for future phases. Now, if this is the first phase, what can we look forward to? I mean, each each additional phase is obviously going to come with with another cost added to it.
Correct. So in the first phase, it's Lloyd had mentioned in the plan, there is a middle section of the building that would be brought up to use, which is the main entrance, the what's currently the chapel area and the second floor area. So that would be brought up to code for public use. The rest of the building would be brought up to code for life safety issues. So the building would be maintained, sprinkled, heated, et cetera, but not for occupancy. So once you determine in the next phases what those uses are, those would be brought up to those use codes. If you decide for it to be a school, a car wash, a park center, the building, when those sections were brought up to those required codes. So in that section that you're referring to, that's just a short summary. It's a longer, more difficult question to answer. So that's why in appendix D, the final appendix, if you skip to the back of the document, are the referable codes that we would expand upon the based off of the program use at that time.
Isn't it a possibility too that if you use it, the idea of a box, you bring all the your utilities and so on in order to how do they say, favor the box? Later, if you were going to expand that, a lot of that work, initial work you did on the box is going to have to be ripped out in order to expand that viability to the rest of the building.
Yeah, and you could refer to that in the mechanical sections that we would provide routes for new equipment and new heating systems, electrical, et cetera. Do our best to assume what the future program's uses, locations of connections. So minimal interruption would have to happen.
The building is so large that if you needed in the basement to put a new electrical service room, for example, that had giant electrical switches, you would create a vacancy next to that for anticipating more switches. And if those switches never happened, you're not really robbing the rest of the building of any space.
Yeah, I know, a logic, electrical terminal, you could have a lot of spaces for for additional electrical feature thing. But the the whole idea of doing it in a box, they, is another thing I'd like to bring up. The fact that they tried, the committee of state St. Paul's tried to do that several year, about eleven, twelve years ago. And our building department supervisor at the time, Mr. Philippon, said it can't be done because you'll never get a certificate of occupancy. Is that? I don't understand why it was true then and it's not true now.
I'd rather leave the discussion about certificate of occupancy to the legal departments. Right now, the building has a designation to it. It's in our report. How the building's going to be used in the future needs to be decided by the village.
All right, well, it still has to fall under code. So we'll see what happens. Oh, another thing. You you're talking about asbestos. But the the building must be totally inundated with mold. And how are you going to abate the mold throughout the building, which could be quite costly?
Yes, well, mold is a very contentious subject. I identified the fact that there was dry rot in the joists from water intrusion, and therefore the mold is eating away at the joists, but I didn't necessarily identify that as a human hazard. And I believe in general, the if the building is kept dry and and heated in the winter, then the mold will be suppressed. And I'm quite familiar with this subject. There is mold everywhere. If 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 we, if we, if we cease to be existing in this room and there was only the mold left, you would see the shadows of everybody's body and the floor and the tables, because everything is covered with molds for, and it's just pervasive. So and if you were to go, and I can, and I know this for a fact, if you were to go to the CDC website or the OSHA website or any federal authorities, they make no certain statement with respect to mold. Mold is not necessarily a hazard. There are certain kinds of molds that are rare that do present a hazard to people that have compromised immune systems. There's no doubt about that. But that that accounts for a very small percentage of the population.
Well, I I want to use an example. There's the Avalon Apartments, which are, which are over near where Fortuneos used to be. The Avalon Apartments were all, were only open eighteen months and they had to close the whole thing down and tell all the tenants to get out because of mold. They had to then abate all the mold before the people were able to go back in safely. Now, I don't want a situation in here, in this building, where mold and and obviously there's like paint, lead dust in the air and so on, will make a hazardous condition for anyone to go onto that building.
Well, the, we're removing all the finishes that are painted, so that would eradicate any, any, any lead paint.
But it's it's under the paint, though.
No, no, we're taking whatever the paint was, no, we're getting rid of what was painted to. All the partitions that are painted are are are. Yeah. So, and in fact, if there, that might alleviate any other concerns. But, you know, when you go through that building, like, we didn't even feel like we had to wear masks. You know, you don't feel, you don't smell that musty, smell must is a form of mold, by the way. You don't smell that musty smell. And it's just that it's set into some of the beams and it's a certain type very, the same kind of stuff that's in your basement and it's very specific. So as far as the whole building, like, we didn't see any evidence of like mold blossoms or patterns of mold on walls or anything like that.
Well, it's inside the walls. It's also inside the ceilings and the floors. So you're just going to say, I'm going to remove the walls. That's not really taking care of the whole problem.
Everything would be stripped down to the skin score of the building. So there would be no organic material remaining in the building during these renovations.
Well, we'll see. As I say, you you say that this is going to be the first phase and then you didn't mention what the second phase is actually going to be.
We don't know that.
The people up there.
But they're obviously, according to your papers here, you are preparing for future phases, apparently phases as in multiple. So apparently there's going to be more down the road coming along and whatever. And the first phase apparently is this forty-nine million dollars.
I think you can also refer to in the report that there is a, you know, plans that have been presented to the village. They're outside of this room. We were providing no design services in this. We were just assessed with the documents provided to us and how many phases at this point.
So, all right, obviously you're working on what you, what you have, trying to, so fortunately, it's not enough. Thank you.
Hello? Bob Wolf speaking.
We have Steve.
Stephen Alati, one thirty-nine Meadow. Regarding the the adaptive reuse, the forty-nine million dollar figure, if that was to be done, you mentioned minimal electric and a bathroom similar to downstairs, which I don't know if that's a one-person or two-person bathroom, what would the occupancy be at the day of finish? Or would it not be really ready for occupancy without a further phase taking place to add electric, add bathrooms and things to make it usable for some kind of recreational or whatever? You know, thing we wanted to put into that building.
Right now, the designation of the building is community use, so the occupancy would be for community use.
But we didn't provide for any public assembly, which is special requirements, like a theater.
Understood, but like, what, how many, what could the building support as far as occupancy for community use? Can ten people go in? Can a hundred people go in? What would? You know, it be allowed to support with what you're proposing to build it out to? I don't need an exact number, but would it be ready to have, you know, a group of fifty people do, you know, a craft program? Would it be electric in the bathroom and all that?
Yes.
Is it, you know, that's the type of number I'm asking.
Community use is fifty square foot per person. So depending on that area, you could have a rough assessment, but if there's a specific determination, again, provided to us, we could determine on what that occupancy would be.
Okay, and the the other, you you mentioned that the the chapel would be would be gutted. And I I understand that that was a big part of saving the building was the chapel. So the chapel would be just become a white box. Everything would be removed. Nothing there would be salvaged for use when the building was renovated?
That's our understanding that the building would be cleaned and prepared for future use. So the existing structure would remain. But that's the the end of it. If there's specific items that have to be salvaged, those would be salvaged. And I think Lloyd mentioned that in, since the building is part of a historic designation, there are requirements to salvage items of the building that determines its historic nature. So if there's a, there would have to be an assessment of that, what is determined to be of the historic nature of the building.
And and I I would assume the village doesn't have to keep all that, store it, you said ship it to the southwest and and store it for five years or whatever. They could, in theory, allow the person who's salvaging that stuff to take possession of it and not have the village take on that expense?
I think that's another question for the village. It's a municipal building. There are rules and regulations towards how those materials are used and taken.
So would the village have an answer to that? Do we have to keep salvage, the salvage, the material that needs to be salvaged, the architectural material? Does the village have to keep that? Or could the village have an agreement with someone who does salvage that and they can take possession of it?
Yes, that's commonly done. That's commonly done. Someone could take possession of that. Village does not have to take possession of anything.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to, the village wouldn't have to ship it, store it in Arizona?
It's just, no, it's just part of the, what we call the salvaging process, because the building is on the national register. There's certain requirements. So again, the state would allow you to demolish the building. They would probably put some conditions, right, to say, okay, one, try to save certain elements of the building, either exterior and interior elements of the building, and that would be a requirement so for, to get a demolition permit. One, one thing I want to make a point of also, that I don't think Mr. Westman and Mr. Taylor made of, because the building's on a national register, the historic building does not have to meet the energy code requirements of the state, right? Historic buildings are exempt from meeting the energy code requirements. It's a good idea to do it, right, if you can, but we're not required to do it.
And and the last thing is, I, as you know, been at many of these meetings and it's been discussed how the the building was so hazardous that you needed the hazmat suit and respirators to go in. And tonight, we're hearing how we were comfortable walking around it with no masks. There's no smell.
Well, I think there was a point that was missing here, and I think can add some insight to this.
Let me just take that, Mary. Thank you. So the building was tested. So the air quality in the building is were tested normal. So the building, as you walk, being in the building many times, you can walk throughout the building without a mask. If you prefer to wear a mask, that's fine. Hazmat suit, that's fine. But we did have the building cleaned and the building now you can actually walk through at least the first and second floor. Preferred the basement that, you know, not walking through, because there's a lot of the brick and stuff with building collapsed on the lower level, but the overall air quality of the building is safe to walk through. I just want to make another point clarification with the occupancy loads that are going back and forth. The building department can determine as far as their their task was the first and second floor, to occupy first and second floor. So the building department has a right horizontally to CO, CO only the first, second floor and revisit it for the fourth and the third, fourth and fifth floor in time. So we can CO sections of the building accordingly. They are correct in is the building has to be main for safety, health and safely, safety is is a factor. So fire, the fire marshal has to walk through the building, sprinkler system, alarm system, and so forth, has to be done. ADA requirements have to be done in order to make the building safe, whoever occupies it, but just. But just the the main part of the building that's being used, we can see all that section. So it can be done section at a time. As I've approved commercial buildings throughout the village horizontally and vertically, depending on how the building is split up. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the audience? About on Zoom?
Hello, Bob Wolf speaking.
Bob Wolf, go ahead.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes.
Okay, I have several questions on the demolition, on the salvage salvage the items we salvage. You mentioned that the company doing demolition might take those as part of their payment. So is this cost overstated if we're assuming that we're going to pay the full cost of the salvaging?
I think you're referring to salvage like copper pipe and steel and stuff like that that has some market value.
Same glass mason, whatever, whatever these three categories are, it comes to three and a half million dollars.
Most of that labor and storage charges to to remove the stuff carefully and create it and.
But if the vendor who does the does that work and is able to get some salvage value out of it, that should reduce his bill. Okay, I'll go on to my next one. The the one year escalation, three percent, what does that meant to cover?
It's just an arbitrary number akin to the cost of living increases, which people typically carry around two and a half to three percent. And I just extended it out.
Project at best is at least three years away.
I'm sorry, say that again.
This project is not going to be done within one year.
Right, so I I I don't know when it's going to be done, so I provided for one year.
I would provide it for three years.
That's we could discuss that. I said, whatever. Then we would, of course, have to apply that to all three budgets. So it just increases. Yeah.
I'm saying, next question, you did mention that design design costs are not in here. So we'll need an estimate from somebody on that. And would a village hire a construction manager to manage this process also? Any thought to that?
That's a good question.
A million dollar question, probably.
Yeah, on the on the I I I contemplated the budget with a general contractor. Now, it could be subject to the Wicks law and generally a public, public agency that does work that's subject to the Wicks law. And just for anyone here doesn't isn't familiar with the Wicks law. The Wicks law states that the general, the town has to hold a general contract separately from the mechanical, the electrical and the plumbing each individually. And if it's a small project, typically they all work together. But if it's a very big project and each of their scopes individually is it's very complicated and large, then sometimes an an agency will hire a construction manager who acts as if they were the agency themselves to oversee all the work and make sure that it's properly coordinated. In the case of the demolition, I definitely is not necessary. In the case of facadeism, it's probably not necessary. Once it was designed, it would be like tell the general contractor, go do this. And and I believe that the mechanical electrical components of the facadeism are so small that it would probably be an allowance to allow them, the general contractor, to do that. Adaptive reuse would require some, it might, but you know, there's like, I think I have about ten million dollars in there for those contracts. It's not a significant charge, whatever it would be, I think, for a construction manager.
My concern is we're missing this is this is the Westman is part of part of the process. Like you said, there are no design costs in here, there are no legal fees in here, there's no construction manager in here. And I can probably find a few more things to like, we dig deeper. And even even in your write up, you would say this this thing is this plan is almost like a five year process. And yet you used you use one year for your escalation. The other thing I want to just highlight, you've said it once, but I don't think people heard you. We're not doing any work on the third and fourth floor other than making it air conditioning and doing what's required. There's no fancy paint job. There's no nothing third or fourth or or second phase that would happen ten years ago, ten years in the future. It's way out there based on on your thought process. All right, I mean, we have, we don't have a number yet for furnishings, don't have a number for window coverings. We are nowhere near a total number on this project. And that those are my points for the evening.
I appreciate that. And I would just reiterate that our, according to the RFP that was responded to, we were to be able to buy the construction cost estimate.
You've done your job. I'm not explaining you, you've done your job.
And design services, finishes, et cetera, those could go exponentially depending on what consultants are necessary. So that that phase, once again, programs determined, those could be developed out of another phase or another RFP from the village.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I have a question regarding the demolition costs. Demolition just includes taking down the buildings, filling up the hole and basically putting grass. Is that correct?
And a few trees and some benches.
Right, so if we wanted to make it a more elaborate site, we would have to have more monies put aside for that also.
Correct.
So then that would add to the cost of demolition, I would say.
Theoretically.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Donald, do you want to speak?
Anyone else?
Still muted.
Anyone else?
Oh, there he goes. Go ahead.
Am I up?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen. Don McLeod, Westbury Road. Mr. Westerman, thank you for making yourself available tonight. I had a little bit of back and forth with Brian Gemmell. And online with him last night, he said the hundred thousand square foot building was a one story building. Did you say it was a five story building? For facade, under the scenario of facadeism?
Yeah, it's just volume. Could be a four story building, but a more expanded footprint. It's just it's it's variable. And we just used a hundred thousand square feet as a as a benchmark. I mean, you could put a half a million square foot building there.
But but in all in all fairness, if you build a five story building as opposed to a one story building, your per square foot value are substantially different, correct?
Not necessarily. That's, you know, it's sorry, a ranch house is more expensive than a than a two story house because the foundation is that much more extensive.
Right, but a once a one story building of a hundred thousand square feet is an enormous footprint for that area of St. Paul's, correct? If it's two hundred feet wide, it's going to go five hundred feet, which will take it across the parking lot, right?
Yes. It looked like.
Okay. So so a prefabbed dome like they built at Stony Brook or some of the other universities around here that are fifty, sixty thousand square feet that cost twenty million dollars would be very different from a hundred thousand square foot building that's five stories. Is that fair to say?
I just don't know.
We don't know. It really again determines on the use of the building, you know, a warehouse is cheaper than a athletic center.
Absolutely. Fair enough. I I I've looked. And I find a lot of these dome over a soccer field, lacrosse field theater seem to be in a twenty million dollar range. So what you have is a five story building, your estimates for a five story building, correct?
Estimate is for a hundred thousand square feet at twelve hundred dollars a square foot.
A hundred, so that would be a hundred and twenty billion dollars, correct?
Yeah, I think that's what it shows.
So so now I'm even more confused. You have a hundred and twenty million dollars. But the other night, we had sixty million dollars. We had six hundred dollars a square foot. Now it's.
That was for the, I'm sorry, the six hundred dollars a square foot was for the theater. That that's a different footprint and and parts of that building are integrated into the St. Paul's building. In this case, in the you're talking about facadeism, I'm sorry, I have to clear my throat. We anticipated very little, just the bulk of a hundred thousand square foot building to put back there. And it could be anything.
But but a one a one story dome of a hundred thousand square foot would be enormous, correct?
Yes.
Stony Brook, I think, is eighty thousand, Brown seventy six thousand, Princeton seventy thousand. A hundred thousand square foot is an enormous single story dome, correct?
If I may, I I think this might be too specific of a question. It all depends. We were asked to provide a number for the facadeism.
Which we did.
Which we did. The next phase of the facadeism is an assumption of what may be put behind it. During the facadeism, we use the Balensky Report from two thousand twelve, if I remember correctly. And we made assumptions on that report. Even that report itself made assumptions on how the building could be reused in the future. So I think.
Fair enough. So I guess my question is, I thought the village should have as many options as possible. I brought up the idea of facadeism. I brought up the idea of monumentalism that seems not to have been followed up. So I guess the question, if there's anybody from the committee there, if you potentially have a hundred thousand square foot facade, that could be one story, which would be two hundred feet by five hundred feet, which is enormous, or five stories. Can I ask who in the committee put my name on this? Because clearly, when I suggested a scenario, it was a one story low cost dome similar to Stony Brook. And now all of a sudden, we potentially have a five story building. And if this has been discussed earlier, I apologize, I just landed overseas. But the question I ask, is there somebody there from the committee that could explain to me why my name is on something that is so general and and so different from what I threw out there as a rough idea? Is there anybody from the committee there?
We have several members in the committee, but who was involved with this? I have no idea.
I I only need one answer. So, Mr. Mayor, if you if you put my name on it, then just say you put my name on it. That's fine. I don't really care.
Listen, I don't know anything about what you're talking about, Mr. McLeod. And first of all.
I'm sorry, you have to.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir.
Presentation last, no, you, excuse me, the presentation last night said.
I have no idea who made that comment, honestly.
Well, that's great. That's great that it's honest, but it's your committee. So if you could find out since they're there right now.
I'll find out. I'll give it to you. Yeah.
No, give it to ask them now.
Is anybody from the committee here that wants to speak about this?
It's not a difficult question. Somebody put my name on it. Somebody put Mary Flanagan's name on it. It's not that difficult.
I I guess I'd also, I'd like to make clear for the community, if they don't know that I didn't, I am similarly largely unfamiliar with the plan that has my name on it and I don't know who put my name on it. And they were not authorized to put my name on it.
And a plan, a a plan of a hundred thousand square feet is so far from what I had suggested to this committee. I would like to know, since it's a committee of the mayors of thirty eight members and a presentation, was it the communications? Was it Mr. McDonough? Was it Mr. Cole? If they're in the audience, if you could ask them to raise their hand so I could get an answer to this.
Well, let's make let's make it clear that there was a third name mentioned. And that was, of course, my name with no notice to me, no request to use my name, evincing a dramatic disrespect for me, a arrogance with an illusion of superiority that is hard to grasp or measure to take my name like that and to throw it around. Obviously, I never endorsed that proposal. As the St. Paul's Committee knows, from protesting my proposal, my proposal has been for quite a long time to have a community vote. And while that was not approved last summer when I first proposed it, that has been my St. Paul's proposal to hear from the community. Obviously, I object to someone pasting my name on a proposal without notice to me, without any endorsement from from me. It it's a sign of such base lack of manners and disrespect that I find it wholly offensive as I do the reactions of people in the audience right now. Thank you.
Well, trustee Kelly, and and with all due respect to you and trustee Flanagan, you two are trustee members. I am a resident. On October fifth, I specifically wrote to Frank McDonough saying, I would suggest you look at this idea. I have no specific input, whether it should be pick a pickleball or lacrosse or tennis is not for me to suggest, but for you to check with the residents. I made very clear, and I'm more than happy to send this email to the entire board, that I did not have any specific thoughts, but I thought the charge of either demo or a full rehab was inappropriate. And that a member of a board of thirty six people, thirty eight, thirty nine, whatever it is these days, should be a little bit more creative. So I'm going to ask the question again, since I had suggested, hey, maybe we could use an astroturf field here, which in my calculations, and I did some work with John Cantwell, looks about twenty million dollars. All of a sudden, I see either a sixty million dollar or a hundred and twenty million dollar five potentially five story building. Brian Gummel says it's one floor. And my calculations, that would put it somewhere at the far end of that near the high school. So I'm going to ask the question again, who put the names of trustee Kelly, Flanagan? And again, if you've discussed it already, I apologize, I've just landed overseas. And McLeod on the presentation that went out publicly last night, that's so far from anything I have ever suggested to this committee. And I would like an answer, not later, Mr. Mayor, but now, since the members are there.
Handily, sir, this meeting right now.
Are you answering as the liaison or a member of the committee?
I'm just asking a question as a trustee.
Do me a favor. With all due respect, if I could get an answer first, and then you could certainly expound upon it. I've asked the question to the committee, not to the liaison. Thank you.
I don't believe this is the proper venue for you to engage in this dialogue. There's a presentation.
Really? So last so last so Monday night, my name is on a presentation that Mr. Westerman made. We are now here with the Mr. Westerman and the members of the committee. And it's a fairly simple question. If you have a better scenario or a better place in time, let me know it. But it shouldn't be this difficult. Somebody could raise their hand in the audience. Are there any hands raised?
There not being any hands raised, I would suggest that we move on so that we're not here longer than we have to be.
Well, that's very convenient for you, but I'd like an answer to this. If they if the committee refuses to answer, or if nobody seems to know, I think an apology to Mr. Kelly. I'm sorry, trustee Kelly and trustee Flanagan's in order. I don't need one, but certainly those two deserve it. And again, the mayor is the head of this committee. He did the presentation Monday. When the presentation started, he saw my name on there. And I'm asking, who put my name on there?
I'd like to respond to these questions. There were. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Peter Cole. I'm on the legal committee or the chair of the legal committee. I'm on the committee. We had names that appeared in that report, not in the Westerman report, in the committee report. In the draft report that was handed out or was available on Monday night. We heard protests from people who we understand to be speaking on behalf of name of the people whose names have been assigned to various proposals and have been withdrawn. You'll see that. Fact of the matter is, though, that any number of times over the past eight months, that's all I've been involved, the committee existed before that, that there was any number of times that we were told that we weren't responsive, that we weren't listening to members of the board trustees. that we weren't listening to members of the board trustees. I was here when those kinds of accusations were made. Mr. McLeod and I happen to be neighbors. I can also tell you that, Don, you may want to suggest how many times you've called me, texted me about this. Not about your names, but about your proposals. So we. We, in putting together that report, we're trying to demonstrate that we were being responsive to specific requests made by specific people. We did that. We understood that people didn't want to be associated with those proposals, either because they didn't, they had had change of mind, or they didn't think we were describing them appropriately, or for whatever other reason they may have had. And at that point, we withdrew. But we have no issue here that we didn't hear trustee Kelly. We didn't hear trustee Flanagan. And we heard too often, at least in my case, Mr. McLeod. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could respond to Mr. Cole, and then I will check off because my jet jet lag is kicking in. You are my neighbor. There's nothing I can do about that. I wrote a letter to the Garden City News to keep it simple, to keep it cheap, to keep it inexpensive. And because I have some questions, particularly looking at some of the construction projects we've done, including the NASA train station, that the village has limited bandwidth. The title of the article was keep it simple. And it's keep it simple because the, as a village, we don't seem to be able to handle infrastructure projects like the repositioning of 150 old historical building. So when I see it's potentially 100,000 square feet, when I see it's potentially a five story building, I don't think, Mr. Cole, that is anything I suggested. You also know I suggested monumentism, and you seem to ignored that. So when it fit your agenda and your agenda is clear, you had no problem attaching my name to it. So I'm going to ask the question again, whether you want to take my name off or not. Who put my name in there in the first place? Because I don't believe it was a casual willingness to attribute an idea to Don McLeod. But I believe it was an attempt to embarrass two trustees and a resident a week before the election. So again, I'm going to ask the question one last time. You have a committee of 38 people run by the mayor. Who put our names on there?
Ryan Mulrooney, Hampton Road. The names were put on there, as Mr. Cole said, to designate where the proposals or requests had come from. We had met early in 2022, late winter, going through the various options, demolition, adaptive reuse, and facadeism. It was a feeling that facadeism was extremely costly, extremely complicated, and the village had gone down that road before and would not be a preferred solution to residents. And it would be more time effective to get a plan together for a demolition and adaptive reuse, as those seemed to be the prevailing wishes of the residents, based on the history and the documents that we had and went through. The now, there was in August, the trustees were not happy with what we had proposed or were proposing or planning to RFP. So at that time, we had liaisons come and meet with us. And that was when, I believe, Mr. Kelly, trustee Kelly, suggested he did not want to hear about any more field turf fields.
It violates the procedures of the Board of Trustees to refer to specific trustees. You can say a proposal was made, but you can't refer to a specific.
You asked me, I'm trying to answer your question, sir. I'm trying to answer your.
I asked the question.
You asked for you asked for somebody to come and explain. And I'm explaining, if you don't want to hear the explanation, I won't give it.
I'm telling you that there is a rule here.
Why are you yelling at me, sir? Why are you yelling at a resident?
You don't identify.
You're not a resident.
I'm not a resident. I live, I live in Hampton Road, sir.
You're a member of the committee.
I'm a resident. I'm a resident, just like you said you were a resident, sir.
I'm not a member of the committee. You are.
You're a leader of a political party, so are you not a resident?
So what?
Do we have to do this? I'm trying to explain. If you want an explanation, trustee Kelly, I won't give you one. I came here to give you one. Mr. McLeod says he didn't know, he never insinuated for this type of project. August 21st, 2022, in a Facebook post, he said, it's been confirmed at the last Board of Trustees meeting that the deputy director of the Department of Public Works has sent out an RFQ for a demo on full rehab. No facade RFQ. Seriously, how revealing is that? The committee asked about demo and to save 50 rooms for Girl Scouts. But God forbid, they give a request RFQ on a theater theater sports complex. And that was the beginning of the facadeism request that Mr. McLeod made over the next several months. And that's where the proposal came from. I won't go into any trustees because apparently I'm not allowed. But if you want to hear the explanation, I would have given it. Thank you.
Well, I I guess my point is, and I'm 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 happy that Mr. Mulrooney reads all my Facebook posts. But the letter I wrote to the Board of Trustees, the letter I wrote to the mayor, and the letter I wrote to Mr. McDonough was to keep it simple, to keep it cheap, to keep it prefabbed. 100,000, and and again, I apologize, I have a little bit of jet lag. 100,000 square feet and a five, potentially a five story building is not keeping it simple. So if somebody made an honest mistake, I'm curious as to who made that mistake. If nobody wants to own up to it, I'm okay with that. It seems like we're not going to get anywhere on that issue. I will, however, say, as I wrote to Mr. McDonough when he asked me to give the specifics of the facadeism, that it was not for me to decide that the 38 member committee or 37 or 39, with all its manpower, should be reaching out to the residents. If you ask Don McLeod what he wants, he would tell you it's two lacrosse fields. And what I wrote to Mr. McDonough, the mayor and the committee, was the village should have input into this. If it needs to be tennis courts, pickleball, soccer, a running track, that's for the residents to decide. If you're telling me you not only worked off just a Facebook post that I wrote and created a $100,000 scenario, and then named it after me with no other input from residents in Garden City, then this committee, or at least the uses committee, should be disbanded right now. Because if it's taking.
No, it's not enough. That is enough. All right, you have no respect. You have no respect for your fellow residents and the people that put thousands of hours into this process.
It does, you know what, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, you have no respect.
Mr. Mayor, you put my name on a proposal that has nothing to do with me.
It's not the way we should run this village.
Well, let me, let me ask you something next. Are you going to apologize for putting my name on a proposal?
Let's get on with it. We have a lot of things to discuss.
Are you going to put, are you apologizing for putting my name on a proposal?
Keep going. Keep going.
Good evening. Frank McDonough, 141 Hampton Road. I've been before this board many times, and I've complimented this board for its willingness to tackle some very difficult problems. This is just one of them. When the committee began its deliberations, there were a range of options that we might have taken. We decided that we would have to and wanted to support the decision makers, two people, two groups, Board of Trustees and the residents. We had five, six town halls. We did historic review over six months, what prior residents wanted. We invited everyone and we had private sessions, whomever wanted them. And in those sessions, we listened. And we heard all of the options that were presented and priced by Mr. Westerman. None of the options, none of the options were presented by any of the committee members as their preference. All of the options were either from the Dem, who we offered to help with their analysis, but they never followed up on that, or what we heard in public or private sessions. When you look at the facade option, let me tell you what the report actually says. The trustees asked the committee to evaluate the Irwin Balinski proposal to remove the three wings to the side and behind the main south facade facing part of the building and replace them with a newer building, which could be used by residents in a manner similar to uses in the adaptive reuse renovation, a community center or sports. This was something that had been proposed over many years by many residents. The residents' interest is similar to the trustees' interest and discussed over a decade and is a variation on a prior suggested use for an ice hockey and soccer facility. What were we saying? We weren't saying this was your idea. We were saying that over time, this is an idea that has been proposed, and you were most recent proponents of that. And that as a respectful action, to listen to what you had said and to help your deliberations, they were entitled to a full cost analysis. Would it be refined? Of course. Should it be refined? That's up to you. But the committee's effort was to make sure that you felt you had been listened to. There was no effort to do other than that. Recall that oftentimes, the board has said to us that we were not paying attention, that in fact, adaptive reuse had been what we had only studied. Not true. We began with demolition and facadeism in January. We were told that we weren't hearing as what residents wanted. Not so. So we made the decision as a group to let you know that we were interested in what you had to say. It is not our decision. It's your decision. And you told us that many times in public and often in once, uh, the two or three of the private meetings we had. So the interesting thing, though, to me, and and it's really quite surprising. Look, this is a board of more talented trustees than we've had in a while. And yet, not everything has to come down to politics. We don't have to make this a jihad. We took what we thought were three different ideas and allowed it to be presented, criticized, evaluated. It was not an attempt to do other than add to the overall education of the residents and to assist you in your deliberations. My concern is that everything comes down to a vote. Okay, that's not my world. But what is my world is that we listen and we try to assist in your deliberations. And if that is where we're being criticized, we will all accept that. But let's try and move to our better selves, please. There are a lot of major issues, which I've said to you before. You were wonderful to come when I invited you to the casino convocation over at Hofstra several weekends ago. We've talked to you about the issues with the Hokel administration. These are major issues in front of us. Names, accusations, the spirit of recrimination, and more importantly, intimidation. Intimidation is not appropriate for our village. You have 37 people who spend tons of hours trying to help you with that decision. You don't have to listen. It's your judgment that we rely on. But it isn't a time for recrimination. It's a time to say, thank you. Did we make mistakes? I hope we corrected them. But there was never any attempt to do anything other than to demonstrate that you asked us to listen, and we did. But I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to be up here. I'd like to say that it's highly unlikely, if it had been any other board, that we would be in a position to consider this. So thank you for that. But let's move to the real issues, not to the intimidation and the recrimination. Let's look at what Westerman has done. It's given you three options. Could you refine them? Of course, I hope you do. There's plenty of time for that. But enough with the finger pointing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Steve Gray again, still at 44 Cambridge Avenue. I have some skin in the game in this because Mr. McDonough said there are three on the back. There are four, and one of them has on the top FDEM. And there has been some dialogue, actually even today, with Ryan about this. And there's been a little confusion, I think, about some things. But I did want to at least clarify a few things. I believe that the base number is the base number. FDEM left it to the committee to do their job and come up with a base number predicated upon bringing someone with the talent and experience like Mr. West. However, Mr. Westerman's talents and experience were not called upon to come up with the $15 million number that's added to the base demolition in order to come up with the park. And when I asked him a little while ago, he didn't know what those components were.
Steve, let me explain.
FDEM, F, excuse me, please. FDEM was not asked, are these the ones that you think? I believe they were looking at a letter, a letter last August, in which FDEM simply said, our proposal is demolition, and we suggest a number of different elements. That's all we did. When this thing came out, we were not consulted in the preparation of this document, which lists FDEM. Thank you.
Steve, can I ask, can I answer one of your questions? I think Mr. Kewell is going to come up and answer the question that you just posed about the $15 million additional to the demolition cost? Because he's a landscape architect to develop the design for the park.
Okay, but I'm just pointing out that Mr. Westman, we gave the, we didn't hear from that guy Monday, did we? About those 15 million? I don't think so.
I think it, I think it was, I think it was stated, but let Mr. Kewell speak about this.
It wasn't the same as what was in that letter.
Bill Cool from 69 Pine Street in Garden City. We were endeavoring to come up with an estimate for the park design. We reached out to Conkel and met with them over a month ago. I have repeatedly called them, and they never followed up. So that we never got the estimate that was, would have been attached and part of the overall financial report estimate for this project. I've done many parks all across the country and overseas. So that the $15 million was an estimate that I that I proposed because we wanted to, if this, if that was going to be the option that goes ahead, we wanted it to be a first class park. And there are a lot of unknowns yet about, we would have to install a drainage system, irrigation, electrical, a whole host of things. And we, we'd want to use up, you know, top class material. For example, just the planting, if we were going to put in trees, of which there were quite a few, we would put them oversized. We'd probably try to use six or seven inch caliper so there would be an instant impact when that park, if that's the option, and it was constructed. But so that's where the number came up. If there's, if there's concern, I can certainly read out, reach out to Harder. And I'm sure they would be happy to come up with a refined, more refined estimate to support the design. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, why didn't you link in with your reports that FDEM has? And why weren't the elements listed? Come up with the $15 million. Because every time they were brought in these, what now, well, was all in for. Then why should FDEM be in the report? It was not.
Yes, sir.
Leo Stimmler, 67 Huntington Road. I think the committee on St. Paul's is wrong, and it's very dishonorable that they did not approach trustee Carter Flanagan, Mr. McLeod, and trustee Kelly with their document that they gave out to all of us Monday night and said, here, trustee Carter Flanagan, this is 106 million dollars. This is, do you accept this? We'd like to put, we'd like to have your permission to put your name on this. Same with Mr. McLeod, same with trustee Kelly. They didn't do that. And I'm very disappointed on the committee of St. Paul's for doing that. It's, it's, it's shame on them.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Just come up.
Along the same lines, we deserve better than this.
Along the same lines, we deserve better than this. Oh, Anne Griffin, Garden Street, Anne Carter Griffin. You know, I've been on Facebook, which I don't go a lot on, and it, it's painful. And our village deserves better. We all want the best. I think one thing, it's hard not to understand why. The idea that names being put on something without someone's permission. I teach kindergarten. It's like basic respect one oh one. You don't put a name to something, especially something so big and important without checking with the person. And it does, it's not good for the tone. It's not good for our village. And I don't know how anyone would have thought this wouldn't be the reaction. I think of all the people who have worked hard on the committee for thousands of hours. And the frustration they must feel because of the distraction, because of a poor choice and responsibility isn't taken. The trustees and residents' names should never have been on there. Fall on your sword. Shouldn't have happened. Move on. But to twist it and make it sound like the people whose names were inaccurately misleading way put on there are in the wrong. Is sad, upsetting. We have to come together and I hope we all do. I think I have young children. Do we want, like, do we want our kids to be reading what's going on Facebook and the conversation? It's basic, 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 and we're going to get nowhere unless we all come together. And I really believe we all want the best for Garden City.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That's why I have one fast question from Mr. Westerman. Mr. Westerman, just out of curiosity, if you had used. Fifty thousand square foot building for the facadeism as opposed to a hundred thousand, I presume the cost would have been a lot less. And could that have been done?
So remember, the facadeism budget is two parts. One is to. Reduce the size of the existing building to nearly what is just the facade. And, and, and provide for it to survive for some indefinite period. That is the major component of our budget. The, the, the. Items below the line. Of course, you could put a ten square foot doghouse there. It would cost fifty dollars. You know, whatever you want to do. It's just not that complicated. I don't, so.
I thought, I was just curious, so that would lower the number. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Westerman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
And the board.
Thank you, everyone. May I just also like to thank Mr. Westman and his team for providing us with this very comprehensive report. And also like to thank the St. Paul's committee for all the time that they spent. I've spent numerous hours with, with Will Lees preparing the drawings. I just want to say that. Thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah, if I could counters, thank you. The, the, the Giuseppe and, and his staff have been excellent and as a guide and assisting us in our evaluations. And, 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 and the paradigm of, of that kind of civic involvement was outstanding.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we're going to move on to the regular board of trustees meeting. Everybody leaves. There's nobody. Okay, I'd like to call on the department heads. We're going to begin with Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner, good evening.
Hi, sir.
Let's, let's give them a little bit more time to move on. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Good night. Thank you.
Sorry, man. I have one item on the agenda. I'm afraid.
The DCGS is the Division of Criminal Justice Services, New York State, put out a questionnaire to all the police departments who are interested. In obtaining funding for the body worn camera program. Several of us in Nassau County applied and we were awarded one hundred thousand dollars to help us start our program. The price that we got from one of the main vendors and who was on state contract is a five year program is three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. The one hundred thousand dollars, if accepted by the board, would go into, I would request it to go into next year's capital budget. So we can start the program and then I have two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in the next year's line. So we can continue with the payment of the five year schedule. Of course, that two twenty five could be spread out now among the five years. So that's what, but it's, we got the award. It helps us with the program because originally I thought we're just going to buy it and then find our own ways of storing it. This will help us with a program that does everything, is storing, it's, because the cloud is a lot of money for storing and for editing. Body worn cameras, whenever you have to go to court, has to be edited. It's a lot of work. So that is all covered within that realm. So I'm asking the board to accept that. We have received it, right? Irene, we received the money. So we have received it, but I'm asking that we approve of to keep it and then to move it later on. I'm going to ask to move it into the capital line if approved. That's all I have, Mayor.
That's good. That sounds like good news. Thank you, Commissioner. Any comments?
Oh, the commissioner, fantastic job today with the situation over at the middle school.
Oh, thank you very much. It was, it was good job by the officers to respond. I was with them, but it was good. Good community effort. And I have to say, the school was very cooperative and worked with us very well. And we practice a lot and practice helps us.
Thank you.
Good job training and good job on execution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Chief Perrin, I think he's on Zoom.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. Apologies for not being there in person. I'm currently out of the state. The fire department has nothing on the formal agenda tonight, but I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
You look a lot younger.
Thank you.
Nice picture.
Very good.
Good.
Any questions for Chief Perrin? No? Okay. Village Treasurer Irene Wu, how are you?
Good. Good evening, everyone. Tonight on the agenda, there is one item under the finance department. And that's a transfer of funds that's being requested in the water fund. This came from Village Administrator Swazi and he'll speak more about this later on.
Thank you. Next is Village Superintendent Giuseppe Giavanello.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The building department doesn't have anything on the formal agenda this evening. But I also just want to mention the work performance of my team. The month of March, we, we. We performed eighty five inspections. We've taken in eighty building and commercial building and residential permits. And we have an intake of to date to the month of March of three hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, next is Commissioner Paul Blake. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and everyone who's here and enjoying the show tonight. It's been a. We have one item on the agenda tonight, and that is the award a bid for annuals, perennials, and bulbs. We are requesting that we split that into three awards. One to Pinewood Perennial Gardens, one to Site One Landscape, and one to Emma's Garden Growers. These are the lowest responsible bidders in each one of these categories. And these are paid out of operating budgets with a total of about nine thousand dollars estimated for each fiscal year. That's all we have on the agenda. I would like to mention that due to some inclement weather, the tree planting will begin tomorrow. It was supposed to start Wednesday. Contractor will be on site tomorrow putting in those hundred twenty two trees. Also with the inclement weather, we are gearing up for baseball, soccer, and lacrosse season. And I would just ask everybody who's involved, if the fields are all soft or muddy, please stay off them until they firm up. It's going to take a couple of weeks before they really settle in and can be used for, for gameplay. And other than that, that's all we have this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Paul, if I may have a question. The Little League contacted me. They have opening day April first. So I wanted to check with you, trustee Kelly, in charge of the traffic commission, the mayor, and also Commissioner Jackson. They requested that, as you've done in the past, to open up the parking lot behind Stewart Field so that they have easy access with the crowd that's expected. So I was wondering if we could accomplish that.
We can absolutely do that if you direct me to do so. We will make sure it's open on game days only. And we will close it up when the games are done.
And Commissioner Jackson, can you, I need to put it last time. Could you have some people just directing traffic for safety?
I guess we'll work on that schedule. I'll work with Paul on the schedule and I'll work with him on that.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that? Trustee Kelly, you okay with that?
I don't, I have no idea what the schedule is at this point. I'm certainly comfortable with that for opening day. That's not a problem. So why don't we just do that? And why don't Paul, you get the traffic commission, the schedule of games so we can look at it? And because we don't want to spend resources to open it up and to provide village services. If it's one game between two teams and so let's see what the schedule looks like. But certainly opening day, let's get that all ready. Let's make that a seamless experience the way you, both of you did. Last fall for the Thunder Football, both the police department, recreation department did such a great job. So let's replicate that as the baseball season starts. That'd be great.
Typically, that field does have multiple games on Saturdays, starting between eight thirty and nine in the morning, running until about one o'clock. And then they're pretty much done. But it's typically three fields and potentially a fourth field if they run the T-ball games. So it would be pretty much four games every Saturday for probably ten to fifteen weeks. But we'll reach out to GCAA and see what they may have on the schedule.
Sure, that'd be great.
Sure.
Yeah.
Trustee, the only, only issue I may have that day, we have a run for St. Joe's that day that we have to take care of. The police department needs to run there. So I'll work with Paul and do our best I can to have enough personnel there.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, gentlemen.
Which run is that? There's a.
It's the St. Joseph's Run.
Yes, okay, thank you. Yep.
I mean, hope for a cure or something like that.
Yeah, trustee Kelly is to run in there.
Yeah, I may again. Change.
Yeah.
You never know.
Thank you.
Well, one other question, if I may. The Little League also asked, is there any progress on the dugouts at the Major League Field and when that might be refurbished?
This microphone is not cooperating tonight. We've already been in touch with the Little League. We've answered several emails regarding that. The old dugouts have been demolished. New concrete pads for new dugouts have been laid and we are just waiting for the fence contractor to come back with an estimate to have the dugouts installed. We're hopeful of having them in in the next week or two.
Oh, that's great. I'll report back. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next is Superintendent Public Works, John Barone. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. Public Works has five items on the agenda tonight. I'll try to keep it brief. Item number four is for a change order. To purchase a new pump starter for pump number two at the Cedar Valley Pump Station. The first bullet point is to transfer approximately ten thousand five hundred dollars to sewer building repairs. From the DPW Garage Doors Replacements projects. And the second bullet point is a request to approve change order number one in order to purchase the pump starter for pump two at the Cedar Valley Pump Station. Item number five is for a change order to replace and install new gasoline and diesel hoses, nozzles, and breakaways and swivels. For the gas pump replacement that was down at the yard. There's a slight modification needed for this item as the finance department was able to locate items that were under a source well contract at a reduced rate. So the change order would be in the amount of six thousand six hundred eighty eight dollars and ninety six cents. Thank you to Ms. Wu and her team for finding that. Item number six, gas boy fuel system replacement. It's a software license agreement. That allows us to be able to track the gas that is used and communicates with our systems. This is a software license agreement. There's no cost for the first year. This is covered by implementation of the system. There will be a cost of ninety nine dollars per month for period sixty months moving forward. The agreement has been reviewed by council and approved as to its form. Item number seven is to ratify rates that were submitted by Omni Recycling, which became effective January first. The new rates for recycling newspaper and cardboard have reduced from seventy five dollars a ton to fifty five dollars a ton. And for commingled recycling from a hundred dollars a ton to eighty five dollars a ton. The final item we have is item number eight, which is authorization to renew a contract for cold water with cold water meters. We order meters through the water department on an as needed basis. That's all the items I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Next is Gary Fishberg. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda, nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ralph Swazi, Village Administrator. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, trustees. Good evening, everyone. Mayor, the transfer of funds that Mrs. will refer to, we had some maintenance of plant, maintenance of plant items we needed funding for. There was a sewer main issue over on Adam Street. We had a call in Orchid to help us with. And we also had a crack in the boiler at the waterworks building where the maintenance equipment are housed. And so we need to transfer for that. That's what those two items are for. I have nothing else. If there's any questions, be happy to.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? Any citizen comments on agenda items? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, let's move on. Next sort of businesses this evening is the approval of the minutes of the previous board of trustees meetings. You have a motion to approve the minutes of the March second, twenty twenty three Board of Assessment Review Meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. They have a motion to approve the minutes of the March second, twenty twenty three Regular Board of Trustees Meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's go on to the formal agenda.
Special Board Name.
What's that? Special one?
That was just me, so I guess I'll make the motion.
Right.
To approve the minutes. How do we, I was the only one at the meeting.
Yeah, you have to make it, yeah, because you're the only one there.
I'll make the motion? Not, not necessary? I'm the only one who can vote on it. I vote in favor of approving the minutes of the meeting I attended.
I'll attest that she was there.
All in favor? The motion, the motion passes. Let's move on to the formal agenda. Do I have a motion to set the date of April third, twenty twenty three for the public hearing on the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the formal agenda is the transfer of funds from surplus for the purchase of fire trucks. Trustee Torino, do you want to discuss this issue?
Can I, can I take it first? Is that okay? Because I think everyone agreed that they allow me to present. And then, trustee Torino, I'm happy to turn it over to you. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, always.
Okay, so. It bears repeating that I was the fire commissioner last year, worked about seven months with the. Thousands of hours on that committee with subject matter experts from New York locally and our own fire department and chiefs. And they, we came up with, they came up with some very strong recommendations, two of which. Were musts. So we looked at what's a must right now, what's a plus. So the two musts, we're getting a training facility. Our training facility is in repair. Sometimes the fire department actually, and I've seen this, they're training in the driveway in the parking lot outside. Because one of the buildings, actually, we had an accident where a fireman fell through the stairs, but luckily he was saved, wasn't injured. And so that'll also help with recruiting and all that goes with training. As evidenced today by the police department, you know, through training, you, you get what's called muscle memory. So in a tough situation like a fire, the more training you do, the more rehearsals, the more it becomes habit. So I had the privilege of serving on that. And the two musts again were this, the. Training facility and synchronizing the fire engines so that each engine had its, the same apparatus. So that the volunteer firemen. would have ease of use, especially in emergency situation because many of them are are more used to the the trucks that they're working on as opposed to all the different manufacturers that we have now. An example of this is the New York City Fire Department, they synchronized uh in New York every single fire engine apparatus so that a fireman or or what they call a chauffeur, the one who drives the truck, can jump on any engine without having to think about what they need to do or the ability to drive that, be a chauffeur for that truck. In the past, we had paid firemen, so they had their own chauffe, they were their own chauffeurs, but they followed the truck that they chauffeured. So they would go around like every three or four months and switching to different houses, firehouses, but they stayed with the truck. Now we have chauffeurs that are trained on all the trucks, but they're more used to the truck that they drive most of the time. So I'm just gonna, it bears repeating some of the things I covered in the last meeting that I want to cover before I go through some good news on how we can approach paying for this. I I will point out the last time we looked at a bond, it's not necessary. So I'm gonna be able to talk to you about that and hopefully we'll get approval to move forward on what I think is a critical issue for fire safety and in some situations, a life and death situation. So this is a must, not a, not a nice to have synchronizing the fire engines, uh it's not only for residents but it's also for the firefighters themselves. Okay, these are people who are going in and risking their lives every day on our behalf. And I might say they're not paid, they're volunteers. So it was pointed out that for us to run as a fire department, don't, by the way, the whole idea of the Fire Safety Committee was to build on the success of the current Fire Department and take it to the next level of efficiency and safety for the village, which they were totally open to. Uh so in synchronizing the the engines and the apparatus, okay, it allows our Fire Department to more effectively and efficiently you know, respond to fires. Uh it also is quicker. So I pointed out in the past, I want to reiterate that a fire can double in size every thirty seconds. Think about that. Thirty seconds. If you have a a situation where there's a fire, a house ablaze and somebody is not used to the apparatus of the truck that's there because it's a different manufacturer than they're used to working on, that that thirty seconds can make a difference. Alright, they are trained, they're working hard, they're trained on the different trucks, but having a similar truck is not the same as having the same truck. People need to know that. Alright, so it's how quick can water get to a fire? That's all that matters, how quick can water get to a fire? So I think those are some things to consider. Now, some of the things that came up, I think we addressed, happy to answer any questions or have the our Fire Chiefs answer any questions or Bruce's Fire Commissioner that still come up. I think we answered all the questions as far as you know, uh why are we going to synchronized engines, how we went through the process, et cetera, et cetera. The biggest question was in two meetings ago, I think it was, was will these engines fit in every firehouse? So for example, the Edgemere Firehouse, there was a concern that the engines would not fit. I'm happy to report through uh our inspection there with Giuseppe. Then Giuseppe, tell me if I have it right, that all the engines will be able to fit in the Edgemere Firehouse number two, am I correct? Okay. So I think as far as that, the last time we left it, the only questions that were outstanding were budget. And I proposed a bond at that time. But now I'm happy to report that we have another area to to finance this and I think it's very appropriate. Before I go to that, I want to just read a letter that Chief Pern wrote to the Board of Trustees and I'm just gonna take it from a piece that's appropriate for tonight's meeting. It says regarding the reasoning for the request, our ultimate goal is to standardize the engines in our fleet. As mentioned over the past year, this allows the Operations Department to run more effectively and efficiently. Our engine chauffeurs would be familiar with every engine, regardless of the station from which it responds. The process of training and qualifying our chauffeurs would improve drastically. Currently due to the fleet being from multiple manufacturers, each chauffeur must be trained on each individual engine. This takes significant time. Even members familiarity with the engines varies based on which engine they utilize more frequently than the others, that was from our chief. So obviously, this is a potential risk to our residents, our properties and the firefighters themselves. So as I mentioned before, training is critical. So when you're training on different manufacturing trucks, more time, more effort and the muscle memory is not the same as if you're responding to a fire with all the same synchronized trucks and apparatus. So it's very important for consideration and having all the same apparatus and the people trained, including the chauffeurs, but all the, our volunteer firefighters. It's, it's, it's a critical safety issue for life and death, it's not a nice to have, it's a must. It's a must. Okay, so with that in mind, I wanted to review with you what I put together after many meetings with Irene Wu, our Chief Financial Officer. And Irene, I'm gonna go through some of the numbers we discussed and I'd like you to make sure that I accurately portrayed it. Okay, yeah. So looking into how important it was, I thought we had a moral obligation, so I really did a lot of work on this. The surplus at the end of twenty twenty-one fiscal year was thirteen point five million. I want to point out that you need to keep a surplus because of emergencies. So going back a bit, we had a surplus and when, uh I think it was Irene, was it, was it Irene Storm or Katrina? I'm sorry. Too many women. Super superstar, superstar, super. Any, yeah, so anyway, that storm, so we got we paid out five million, but then we got reimbursed uh from FEMA, but you have to keep reserves for emergency. It used to be as low as like two point five. So at thirteen point five, right, it jumped up to eighteen point five this past fiscal year. And that was due to a good oversight on finances by the different departments and also Irene and her group. Uh with the help of course, trustee Deegan. So the surplus at the end of the last fiscal year was eighteen point five million, huge jump. Now it's at eighteen point three because we had already moved uh some dollars over. But then we got more surplus. Now it's at twenty-one point five, twenty-one point five million, that's a huge percentage of our budget. And I might point out that the controller has taken action in the past on some villages and towns where they were told they have to spend some of their surplus money, they can't leave it hanging around. We could, I'm not saying we are, we could be exposed to that. And I asked counsel, uh our counsel, Gary Fishberg to look into that and he did come up with some towns where that was enforced, although they have no fast and fast rules around, am I correct, counselor? Yeah. Okay, so we're now at twenty-one point five. So with that, Irene pointed out to me that we have to move seven hundred and fifty thousand. Need to answer that? Okay, so we need to move seven hundred and fifty thousand uh for what's called fund termination reserves. So that's being moved over, that's a must. So now that leaves us with twenty million seven hundred and fifty. That's twenty million seven hundred and fifty that we're left with now. So if we move the the two point three we're asking for for the fire engines right now, the other two, because one of them was, we've already moved money over and we've have had budget for it anyway, pretty much except with the, for a little bit that we had to move over. We're looking now at, um, let's see here. Bear with me a minute, we're looking now at eighteen million four hundred and fifty. Okay, so that's our reserves after paying for these fire engines, which I think is critical. Eighteen million four hundred and fifty in reserves. Think about that. Okay, so now, with the concern with the budget which is brought up that we might have to continue, we might have to move some surplus if we decide, if the board decides whoever votes on the time that they're not gonna reduce the budget. If they keep the budget as it is now, you're looking at taking off two million nine hundred ninety-nine, two hundred nine, nine nine zero two million nine nine zero uh in funds, so that would bring the the budget down to fifteen million four hundred and sixty. Surplus, yes, I'm sorry, I apologize, thank you. So for, that would bring it down to fifteen million four hundred and sixty in surplus. Now, in addition to that, Irene pointed out to me, we could also use surplus even at that number to cover taxes so we don't have to raise taxes for the village, which is a very good idea. So if we move the, it's about a million dollars, if we move that over and we now have a surplus of fourteen million four hundred dollars at the end of the day, going into this fiscal year. So from my perspective, there's no reason to move, no reason not to move forward with this. There's no impact, I know Bruce, you were concerned about the impact to the taxpayers, there's no impact, Irene told me, to our taxpayers at all in this. Yeah, and also, just so you know, when there's a surplus, it's our taxes over time, it's grants and it's awards from the state, am I correct on that, Irene?
That's correct, some of all revenues received by the village.
Right, all revenues received from the village, so there's no impact on our, on our taxpayers. I think our taxpayers would welcome the opportunity for more safety in our village. And uh the other, the other item of moving the the money over for tax, you know, to save on taxes, I'm all for it, so that was good that Irene looked into that for us. I also want to point out, if we don't pay for it now, we're looking at at least eight hundred thousand is estimated on additional costs for these engines. So if we, if we go with the other two engines, because one has already been appropriated for funding, we're gonna save at least hundred K, it goes up about fifteen percent, up to fifteen percent a month right now. So the longer that's waited, the more that price is gonna go up and the longer we have to wait for fire safety. So with that, I'd like our Board of Trustees, I think we've answered all the questions or I have and I'd welcome any questions to me or the Fire Department. And Terry and I discussed it, Terry, you wanna?
I'll give you a rebuttal on this. One of the things is looking over the finances and the budgeting process and everything else. We can spend a lot of money in a lot of different ways, we can get the dump, dump trucks for recycling, for cardboard, things like that, we can pave more roads, we can do a lot of different things. Should mention, we could not raise taxes, that's a great thing. Knowing what's coming up to the next board, I'm not in favor of this and I think we need to save our money because the next board's gonna need some, some money behind it for what's coming up and that's, that's just my two cents.
Yeah, I think the, I asked Irene that question. And Irene, I said, are you comfortable, and Irene, tell me if you are, if you're comfortable that keeping the fourteen, if we go with the taxes, if we, are you comfortable from a risk perspective based on your experience having fourteen million four hundred going into next year?
So, so the question on whether having fourteen and a half million in surplus is is ample and would that impact our, our triple A rating, no, I would, I I would think that that's not going to impact our triple A rating at all. But as trustee Deegan did mention, right, it, the the surplus is there for the board to determine how to use in the future. It's for emergency purposes, it's for planned, uh things on the horizon. Projects, spends, you know, whether we, the board chooses to invest in these fire trucks tonight or any other capital projects in the future, it is more an operational board decision on what to invest in. The, the funding, the surplus that's there, i- it is ample. And so the village has the flexibility and the ability to invest. But just keep in mind future costs as well, our expenditures in the, in the future.
Sure. So we went up, we went up in surplus, what, twenty-four million for last year? So we might have surplus again even next year, but obviously we have to keep some surplus, but having too much and not paying for important fire engines, fire engines to, in my mind, come before recycling truck.
If I may.
Oh, I know, I'm not, that was an example, but I'm just thinking out loud since you brought it up. So, I think we're in a very good position to move forward on this, it's not a bond. Uh so I'd like to hear from the other trustees also, if I may.
If I may just add just a little bit. Being a former smoke eater, although it was a long time ago. Fire trucks have a long lead time. And our ability, both as a board and as individuals to predict the future is quite limited. I know that my crystal ball has glaucoma. But the fact of the matter is we will be in fact purchasing fire engines in the future, in the not so distant future. So I don't know what will be the fiscal status of the village two, three, four years ago, but we do know that what it is presently. And therefore, if you buy the engines now, there will be less stress on the board in the future. And at present the cost of the engines will be less, the lead time will be less than if we go into the future. That, another consideration that is extremely significant is the amount of time, effort and energy that the Fire Department through its Apparatus Committee has put into this project. This was not done lightly, it took six and seven months to put it all together. They traveled to other vendors in other states and they compiled what they believed and presented to the board months ago their determination as to what was the most fiscally prudent position to take presently and in the future. If you wind up purchasing three fire trucks you have the safety operation by having all of the men trained as chauffeurs, but likewise you have the ability to extend the lifetime of the trucks themselves as you can then rotate them from one firehouse to another so that they have a uniformity of use. That we don't know what's gonna happen and what is the need going to be down the road in Uniondale. Will we need more equipment, couldn't tell you. But we do have the opportunity to fund the equipment now without bonding it, without challenging the economics of the village. And therefore the transfer of the funds in order to support the purchase of the three engines is recommended both by the Fire Department and the analysis that has been done in support of the economics of it. Thank you, any other comments?
I got a question, Chief Pern, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, trustee.
One question, tonight, are Garden City residents in danger because of the equipment you have today?
No, they're not, everyone is currently safe.
Thank you. Tom, I agree, or trustee O'Brien, I agree that you have a responsibility to look out for all the residents of the village both fiscally as well as far as their safety. If the chief of the department says we're not in danger tonight, then I question the true necessity of needing to buy these tonight. I would say we should probably look to do them over time and true, as trustee Torino pointed out, things cost more. So we could have bought them two years ago, right, we could have bought them three years ago because I'm assuming that the situation with fire trucks has not changed massively since our oldest truck is from two thousand and four. But at this point in time, I agree with trustee Deegan because my concern is that we do have because my concern is that we do have some potential big things facing the village, where we may need the funding that we have today. Therefore, I cannot vote for this.
Yeah, I don't think we have those issues for next year. The ones you're bringing up, that you're thinking of, unless there's something I don't know about. There's nothing on the agenda that we have definitely have to move money over to. But let me answer a couple of your questions. Remember, you know, I understand the chief is speaking from all the work they do. But having different manufacturers, and this is coming from the experts, and this is why New York standardized. Every thirty seconds a fire can double in size. There have been, there have been fire departments where people have wrestled with apparatus because they weren't familiar with it while buildings are burning. This is the truth. All right, so if it's your house, right, and it's your kids, and there's a fire, you'd be, you'd welcome to, you'd be welcoming the fact that everyone's trained on that apparatus. So, yeah, the fire department does all they can to for fire safety, but this will improve it. This was pointed out, if you read the report. This was pointed out that, and that's why the New York City Fire Department synchronized all their equipment. So muscle memory is critical, especially when your adrenaline is flowing. And it's not only, it's, it's, it's more efficient, it's quicker, and I have to point out again, it's how quickly water gets to the fire. And this would, this would improve it.
Tom, you said that five times.
I know. Yeah, no, I know. But I, I think, I think you're voting against it. I don't agree with, the money's there, it could be moved. We might be told by the controller that we have to spend it. And we were at some points as low as two point five. And we went up with twenty-something million this year. We could go up again next year. So I'm going to go with the experts. And it wasn't just our fire chiefs, this was a whole committee.
All right, so I'll just. I, I don't have any questions. There's been, I'm fully familiar with the fire safety report. I understand the goal of moving towards uniformity that they talk about. They also talk about that requiring significant financial planning by the village. And that's where, you know, we turn to Terry, who's our chair on finance. If it was a must, I'd feel differently. I have spoken with the chief more than once on this. This is not being presented as a must by our fire department. And I share in the concern on future expenses and Terry's opinion I share. And for that reason, I am happy to look into budgeting fire trucks, and I think this should be a decision, you know, or or something we're discussing with our finance chair and working on all these issues. I know there's a big item coming on that is very important to the fire department of a training center. And I think we just need to speak and work on these together to meet all the needs. But for tonight, I'm, we'll be voting against using the reserve. And I don't have any further questions.
I just have one, if I may, Mary, just a comment. It was pointed out as a must by the coal committee.
Fire chief on the line. I spoke to him earlier today, so I'm not going to argue with you.
But I read his letter, so I'm just pointing it out. And I respect your opinion, but I want you to know that the whole committee looked at our fire department and analyzed it and died, did a diagnostic, and they said it's a must. I just want to end with that.
Tom, I appreciate all your work on on this. I really do. How many pumpers do we currently have?
How many? Chief, how many do we have now?
We have four, Tom. I checked it.
Yeah.
Four altogether.
Yeah.
And if we bought the three, we have seven pumpers. Have you reviewed any of the fleets of any of the surrounding villages at all to see what they have?
Well, you brought up, I didn't personally, but the the committee did. They came in with their analysis based on the different fire departments. We had, we did chief come from another fire department. So, yeah, we, they did that whole analysis.
Okay, because I reviewed, obviously, you know, I have an easy one in Coral Place and Maniola and Shoreham. But Coral Place, Maniola, Westbury, East Williston, I have a friend out in Lindenhurst. And they looked at our fleet, and our fleet as it is now is superior to all those fleets. And that, and that it should be that way. We expect it that way in Garden City. But that's basically the way it is. So we have seven pumpers. I don't know what kind of value we'd get for the other ones. I mean, yes, the goal should be synchronization, certainly. We're getting what we've, I presume the wheels are turning to get one new pumper. And maybe we should budget for another one and and get to that point, you know, in the near future. But I think presently, what we've bought, what they will be ordering will be sufficient. And again, as I said, this fleet is superior to a number of the, you know, surrounding towns.
Yeah, so a couple of comments on that. Are any of those towns synchronized?
No.
I don't believe any of them.
No, none of them are. And, you know, they.
I know, just for me. So the other thing is, did any of them have an outside in diagnostic from people from all different departments in the city to evaluate it? See, it's very hard, you know, for somebody to to make a judgment from the outside unless they go on the inside and do an inside out diagnostic. That's, that's critical when you're looking at a fire department and bringing them to the next level. So I don't think that that does it for me, you know?
Okay, well, I, that's, it, it does it for me.
Yeah, I know. But I believe, like, how many trucks, how many firehouses does each department have?
I'm sorry. Many all has two. They had one under construction. Coral Place has one. It's a small town. And East Williston has one. And I'm not sure about Lindenhause, but they handle a population of about twenty thousand people. So I would think they'd have more than than one.
Yeah, so they don't have the same structure as we do either.
Okay.
If I also, if I could just chime in very quickly, please, just to clarify something that was said earlier, just to be clear to everybody. Yes, we currently have three pumpers and one apparatus that has the ability to pump as well. If we got additional pumpers, let's just say we bought three more, we would not be keeping all of them. So our total would not move up to seven, just as an FYI. I don't want people to think that the fleet would then go to seven engine pumpers.
I know, we, I know, and you and I talked about that, chief, and I know you would sell them and the values were for the more newer one would be about a hundred, at best, a hundred and fifty thousand that we'd get for it. So what we would get wouldn't, you know, necessarily offset the expense we get for the three new ones.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that we were not looking to expand the fleet significantly and start keeping apparatus like that. That's all.
No, I, I know, and I know you would plan to do that, chief, and I appreciate that.
So when we look at expenses, we put a lot of money into things that are not what I would consider life and death situations. You know, we, which I voted for was Maryland Avenue, right? I think it's like, what do we do? One point four, we're one point six? Okay, thank you. And I'm not opposed to that. But that's pale in in comparison to.
Well, I think.
Hold on, it's just pale, and in all due respect, it's pale in comparison. I know it's near and dear to you, and I voted it just for you on it. But it's, it's not as paramount as a life safety.
Of course, it's not. And and I, and as trustee Merciano asked, are are residents in danger tonight? And the answer is no. And I would expect it would be no. In terms of the Maryland Avenue project, we're expecting to get some reimbursement for the railroad on that.
I know we're trying to.
Okay, so, and we do expect to get that. So it's a little bit different in that.
And then they, they're battling, I think, what, close to four, four hundred K, right?
Yeah, exactly. It's never going to be easy to deal with that.
But I'm just making the comparison that I feel life and and safety is more important than some of the things we pay.
I, there's no argument here.
Well, my everything was not a life safety issue.
Of course it isn't. And 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 we weren't inferring that it was, okay? And we're also inferring that.
Making a comment that the money was spent.
Exactly, exactly. But we expect to get reimbursement. You know, we're not going to get reimbursement here, so it's kind of, kind of not a really good comparison.
No, I'm not saying it's a life and death. I'm just.
The financials that you put forth this evening, to me, it's like a no brainer. To me, it's a no brainer.
I think it's tough.
Because the money is there, you're not bonding it, and we need the apparatus to be synchronized. And this is about life safety. This is about life safety, the life safety of our residents. I don't know about you, the trustees, but I went to the Madigan funeral. I saw it, the Allcott family, after the house burned down. And that's when we started the fire safety committee, right after that. Because I said, this can't happen in Garden City. Garden City is supposed to have the best of everything. This is a premier community. You should act like a premier community. So the fire department needs this because they have, think about this, you're going to wait a year for the apparatus, a year. And then you're going to pay more for it. It makes no sense from just a practical point of view to save lives. And deputy mayor O'Brien is absolutely correct. We had experts from New York City Fire Department come to our meetings and tell us that you have to do this. This is not a want, this is a must. So again, I think it's very important that this board has to really dig a little deeper, I think, and figure out this is what the residents need. We don't want our houses to burn down. I don't want to see any more, I don't want to go to any more funerals. That's not what I'm interested in. I'm interested in making sure the village is safe. We have the best fire department in the area.
We don't want to get to any more funerals either, mayor. We're all, we're very upset at that time. In fact, we just had gotten on the board. So obviously, we were. I'm not sure it was a fire truck issue that caused the fatalities.
So a lot of details that that are confidential.
On this issue.
So I think the trustee Kelly, you want to say anything?
Well, given all the circumstances, all I have read, all I have heard, I don't support you using the surplus to buy two additional fire trucks, and I call for a vote on number two on the formal agenda.
What happened? Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. Does anybody like to remove that from the consent calendar? I'll move the consent calendar. Second. Own favorite? Move on to the formal agenda. On the formal agenda this evening is the item that was postponed from February twenty first, board of trustees. I guess the fire department, right? We're not doing that anymore. Sorry.
Assistant's comment on non agenda.
Any in the audience?
Phil Almer, village historian. Since nineteen thirty-two, the village has issued annual reports of the residents, and this is what they used to look like. And in the report, it tells the various departments do, and it has a financial report in the back of it. And it's quite informative for the residents. In two thousand and ten, this was the last report that was mailed to the residents. After that, for some reason, it was thought that people could look at it online. And so the report has still been issued every year till now, but it's an online report. And I rather doubt that anybody looks at it. And especially now with the new website, there isn't even a reference to where to find it. I would think that it might be worthwhile for the small cost, especially compared to what we've been talking about, for perhaps three dollars a resident to again publish a paper copy. Because then the people get it in their mailbox, at least they get to look at it before they throw it out. Hopefully, they don't. But if they have to be told to go and look, they will not. And so I'm hoping that this can be put on the budget for this coming year.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Any other comments? These are not agenda items. Please come up.
Hi, Ken and Jean Becker, one thirty Poplar Street. This goes back about three months, and I know the deputy mayor, O'Brien, is familiar with this. I've been in contact with him, as same with Mr. Swasey. After listening to all the numbers today, this is going to seem very trivial, but we incurred a late fee on our water bill, the third quarter water bill, which we never received. And that's the crux of it. We've had problems with our mail delivery, so this was not unusual that I didn't receive the bill, but I didn't realize it until we went to pay the taxes online, village. Saw that the October or the September bill was not paid, and it was a ten dollar and thirteen cent late fee. Yeah, if I had lost the bill, said, oh, my gosh, you know, I put it someplace, I, I wouldn't be here and and wait three months to put this before you, because I could see you have much more important things to do. So I got in contact with Kevin Mitchell, the accountant, spoke to him quite a bit. He told me that I had to come to the board. I thought that was a bit much for ten dollars. So I got in contact with Mr. Swasey. This was around Christmas time. You know, I emailed you, and he apologized for not getting back. So my husband and I went to speak to him. Very nice conversation. He was sympathetic. He understood. The bottom line was, he did say, you know what, I'll get in contact with Kevin Mitchell and tell him to waive it. Great. Waited a week or two, see anything, spoke to Kevin, and he said he had no right to tell me to do that. Okay, okay. And said that there was protocol to do this. Swasey, he apologized. He did say I should get a letter from the post office verifying that I didn't receive it. Now, you all live in Garden City. You, if you've lived in Garden City as long as we have, which is will be fifty-one years, taxpaying, same house, and have never missed a piece of mail from your mail carrier, you are blessed. Okay, all right, so you know. So I did go to the post office at some point not too long ago, and they looked at me like, like, really? You want a letter saying that we didn't deliver it? Yeah, just going to try. So now, I am, we had, we, we met Mr. O'Brien at a meet and greet about a month ago. I have all the dates. I have all the emails and all that. If you want to see them, I'm sure you have only four minutes. He tried. I'm sure he is very busy. I don't know if he's ever mentioned it to you. I just wanted to avoid all of this because you are busy with millions of dollars. I did get a letter from Garden City with an additional fifty-one cents added to my late fee and a promise that they would put it on my tax roll if I did not pay it. By the way, I paid the third quarter water bill. I paid the fourth quarter water bill instantly, and I paid my taxes. All in one fell swoop. So I'm up to date with everything except for the late fee. Now, if this is what I have to do, we're here since seven thirty. We went to the meet and greet. If I can't, if you, if you don't think that this is worthy, fine. I just need some, we need some closure on this at this point as to a one-time courtesy for.
Well, you know what I would do, but I think you're going to have to make a comment.
If I may, I just want a quick.
I'm going to take it out of my pocket.
He did, and I refuse.
I'll pick this right now.
I did, Mrs. Becker, I did follow up.
So if I can.
Probably about four times.
Thank you.
So the, I'm in favor of waiving it, of course. So to me, it's not a big deal. I'll make one comment. And my wife's back there. We, we actually had a check not received on a insurance reimbursement. And we got two out of the three checks. It was, you know, medical reimbursement. So we had to cancel the check. We called because we never received it. So I, I can see those things happening. We've had it a number of times. So with that, Ralph, I'll turn it over to you.
So, Mr. Becker, it was very nice to see, it was very nice to see you again.
I'm sure.
I did mention at the time that I was going to forgive Mr. Mitchell that it might, it might get kicked back. And he did get it back. The issue is trustees, and I've come to this board and previous boards with issues like this. When I first took over the water department, and I had issues with high water bills, I'd tell people, I'm looking into it, and I actually instructed them not to pay their bills. And then I went to the board and said, their late fees are my responsibility because I told them not to pay. In subsequent years, because I did it for three years, I told them, pay your bill while I look into it. There is no mechanism for me as a village administrator to take away money or to return money in a situation like this because the village didn't do anything wrong. The system automatically calculates the fee, the penalty, because the money wasn't collected. The board, so the only mechanism there is for the board to leave it, or besides getting rid of fees altogether, which would probably make me happy, I would suggest the board might want to. I would suggest the board might want to, it, it's a rabbit hole. If you give me discretion for anything under a hundred dollars or fifty dollars where this can be avoided, I do believe you did not get your bill. And I asked them to try to go get something from the postmaster. If you lied to me, at least they could bring some to the board and say, it's justification. I, I can't, it's not my money to return. It's the village's money at this point, even though it's a small amount. So we need it, we need a policy or a mechanism that allows me to override the situation, or we leave it as it is and send them away, and send them away with, with the liability still there.
Well, why, I don't know why we're still talking. Can't we move to suspend procedures? I moved to suspend the procedures and add an, an agenda item.
Right.
Any second? Is that everybody in favor? Anybody in favor?
Yeah.
Nothing in favor? So I moved to add an agenda item that the village administrator is, is authorized to waive these kind of fees, late fees, up to twenty-five dollars.
Second.
We have a-
I'm sorry, but, um, so we were always told by village council that these are, uh, fees. The only time the village can waive without board approval is if it was an error on the village's part. Um, and only the board of trustees are, are empowered to waive any of these late fees. Um, so I would just suggest that perhaps-
You can't, the village can, the motion can't be made.
All right, I moved to waive the ten dollar, whatever that fee is.
Sixty-three cents or sixty?
I'd-
Wait, wait.
Yep, only for you.
Sixty-four.
Ten, I moved to waive the fee of ten dollars or sixty-four cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I, and I do think that's a great idea, too. And I was thinking of streamlining the process. And I, I, I do think you should give the village administrator some type of laws are made, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
Whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Lot of, please. Non-agenda items. Up to twenty-five dollars.
Good evening. Robert Vesalotti, thirty-two Brixton. I'm not affiliated with any organization. Because that is a rule and procedure of the board of trustees, right? So if you get up here to speak, you're supposed to introduce yourself, your address, and any affiliations you have within the village or organizations within the village. That might help with some of the procedures that I'm about to mention. Um, as we are about to go through an election and switch a lot of the members of the board and mayor. Um, I think tonight was embarrassing, especially in front of some prestigious guests here who've probably been all over the world presenting projects. And I was really embarrassed as a resident of this town, to be honest with you. I'm addressing the board as I'm supposed to. So I covered B, that you must state your name and affiliation. Questions and comments should be addressed to the entire board and not to individual board members, the village administrator, or other members of the audience. A limit of four minutes. We were going way over four minutes tonight. And, um, uh, let's see. Uh, it is expected that the speakers will observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Resort to personalities will be ruled out of order as will the use of intemperate, abusive, and defamatory language. I think we broke a lot of rules tonight. I was very embarrassed. I'm sure there are others embarrassed. I'm glad there were young people in here tonight, but maybe they were listening on Zoom. I'm not sure. Decorum is really needed. We are at a juncture of a critical, important decision that affects so many people that are not in this room. We have professionals that came here. And you know what? Maybe he threw together a hundred thousand square foot building. What's the difference? If it was two hundred thousand, twenty-five thousand, or like he said, he had to resort to like a doghouse. Okay, that was pretty pathetic that we had to drag him down to that level. We were dragging him down to our level. A doghouse. This was like a dogfight or a catfight tonight. Pathetic, quite frankly. So here's my point. Thirty years of arguing about this. Personalities are all over the place. An election's coming up. Let's bring it back down to earth. So many people in this room are never, that are represented in this village are never in this room. Four kids, three kids, five kids. My block alone, I got dozens. Tell me, tell me what's going on. I can never read the Garden City news. I don't have time, they tell me. We have such an important decision coming up. People not in this room who must be respected. We gotta bring it back down to earth. And let me just tell you something. We need a community center. We don't need to be fighting about demolition. We don't need to be fighting about facades and all the complexities. Do you know how much complexities are with demolition and facade? It's ridiculous. The complexities of fixing a building are hard enough. But if I had to do it alone, I'd choose to fix the, the building versus tear it down by myself versus try to build a facade by myself. I have fixed homes myself, okay, and plenty of them. But my point is, okay, let's do what makes sense for all the people that are never in this room. They weren't there Monday night. They weren't there at the five other meetings we've had. I was at the high school. Gray hair everywhere, just like me, okay? Everyone older, not a, not a soul. I'm expen, I'm going over my four minutes, so no one's told me that. But, okay, so I am done, basically. Good luck with all the elections. But let's make the right decision for the people who are never in this room. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Steve Alati, one thirty-nine Meadow Street. Just a, a comment that I, I think comes off very disrespectful when we discuss the issues with the fire department, buying the engines or whatever's around that. But the, I, I think everyone who's been in this village more than two years is well aware of a couple of critical fires we had. And, and to continue to raise those particular issues, mention, you know, funerals and things, I, I, I don't think it's necessary. You can discuss whether you wanna buy fire engines or anything, but to bring up the personal issues for certain families that are still in the village or have family in the village or friends in the village is highly inappropriate, especially when the, the meetings are recorded, they're available on YouTube. And I, I just think it's wrong to bring up specific examples like that when, without mentioning it, everyone is aware of what's taken place in the last several years regarding the fire issues. Thank you.
Can I add something to that? Michelle King? Can you hear me?
Yes, state your address, please.
Michelle King, eighty Wyatt Road. I agree a hundred percent with what the last person said. Um, I happen to be a very good friend of Gail Madigan. My daughter has been a friend of Molly's since she was two years old. And for, you know, people to say, to bring that up for needs for fire engines, I just feel a very bad taste. Um, a fire engine would not have helped in that fire. I was there at that fire that morning. And I think there needs to be a little more outreach with smoke detectors. That's what would help. The fire might help with the house, but for saving lives, smoke detectors would help. I think the fire department should do more outreach to the, reach out to the residents. I, I just don't think enough has been done about that.
Ms. King?
Yes.
As, as the fire commissioner, I disagree with you, the, with your comment about the outreach that is done by the fire department. It has consistent programs both in the school and Fire Safety Day in October. Unfortunately, not everybody understands or appreciates the need for putting batteries in smoke detectors. But I don't believe that any of the fault rests with the efforts of the fire department. They had an awful lot of outreach, but thank you.
Have there been mailings sent home? I mean, there are some older residents. I can tell you, my dad, petrochemical engineer, he's a smart man. And last time I was at his house, his smoke detector was twenty years old. He had no idea that they expire. And I don't know if a lot of these older residents in town know that.
If I may, commissioner?
Certainly.
So, Ms. King, um, I completely understand and respect your position. We try to hit as many of the residents in town as we possibly can through outreach via social media platforms as well as articles in the G C News. Um, in terms of mailings home, we generally don't do that to the general population. We do do targeted, uh, outreach to, uh, children, especially to the schools, cuz that's, you know, easier to distribute through. Um, it is something we can look into. But like I said, we do try to communicate as, uh, often as we can through various platforms. And if a general mailing will help with the elderly residents, then that's something we could absolutely look to add more frequently. But outreach is something we definitely try to, uh, extend to as many residents as possible.
I, I think it would because, you know, a lot of these older residents are not on social media. And they don't have children in the school. And, you know, I, I don't think the fire engine would have helped. They, I mean, they were gone before that.
Uh, like you said, I'm not going to utilize a specific scenario for any particular means. Um, I'm not gonna get into that. It's not right for the family. Um, but in regards to the outreach, again, we will try to, uh, reach out to as many residents as we possibly can. And we will try through as many different platforms. And if that includes a general mailer, then that's something we can definitely look into.
Thank you.
Any other comments? On Zoom? No? Have you seen that? I asked for a motion to close the meeting.
Uh, this is, this is likely to be the last board of trustees meeting for Tom and Terry. So I personally wanna thank them for their service, and I wanna tell them that it was a pleasure to work alongside them.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Charlie. I was, I was just about to thank you and the other trustees, uh, for the ability to serve with you. It's been a real privilege. And I appreciate everyone's help, support, and also the different thoughts and ideas and opinions that we come together on. Um, and I also wanna thank the residents for the opportunity to serve you. Maybe I'll be able to serve you in the future. Uh, I'm not running this year, but, uh, it's been a real privilege. And having grown up in, in town, uh, and lived here my whole life, uh, it's, it's really special to me to be able to serve all the residents. So I wanna thank you for your support, your participation. And, uh, again, it's been an honor and a privilege, uh, serving you folks.
In addition to you, I believe the thanks goes to Donna.
Yeah.
For letting you be here.
Yeah. Thanks, Donna.
Thanks, Tom.
Oh, yeah.
Any more comments? Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for all your service. Great job. Um, having seen none of the other comments, make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.